Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. My name is Ruzi Luizhen and I am the president of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Luizhen.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Murphy.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Pepin.
Here.
Counselor Santana.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
And Counselor Worell. Present. Quorum is present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I also want to recognize, we have a pretty packed room here. I want to recognize a number of people here in the room. I want to recognize former Congressman Joe Kennedy. I want to recognize former city councillor Tito Jackson. I want to recognize Register of Deeds and former city council president, also a pride of High Park, Steve Murphy. Is he here yet? Is he in the room? Steve Murphy? Steve? He is? Oh, well, he'll be coming in. Current Fire Commissioner Paul Burke. Past Fire Commissioner Jack Dempsey. Thank you for being with us here today. Ed Zo, general president of the International Association of Firefighters. Thank you for being with us here, Ed Kelly, Ed Zo. And I know that there are a number of other people. We have folks at Cathedral High, Counselor Pepe, and turned out a lot of folks here. We are so excited for your maiden speech. Thank you for being with us here today. It is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy. We have an interfaith invocation happening today, and I'd like to introduce Grand Rabbi Y.A. Korff, Imam Vincent Ware, and Reverend Mariama White-Hammon, also our Chief of Environment. So if you could please come up. This interfaith clergy was brought here today by Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson of District Seven. I will briefly read their bios. Grand Rabbi Y.A. Korff was born and grew up in Boston, and he is the chaplain of the city of Boston. After high school here, he was educated at Columbia University, my alma mater, and then at Harvard Law School, my alma mater, Brooklyn Law School, Harvard Divinity School, the Fletcher School of Law and Diplomacy, the Boston University Law School, the Berlin Rabbinical Academy, and the Rabbinical Academy of Massachusetts, and is admitted to practice law here and in DC, and in a bunch of other courts. He was appointed chaplain by Mayor Kevin White in 1975, succeeding his late uncle before him and his late grandfather before that, who had been appointed by Mayor Curly. Rabbi, thank you for being with us today, Grand Rabbi. Imam Vincent Ware, Imam, we are so happy to have you with us here today. Imam Vincent Ware wears various hats in the community, including being on the board of directors of Mass Boston, the Muslim American Society, and United Muslim of Massachusetts Association. His participation in public affairs and robust civic engagement are inspiring. Imam, I see you all around our community and in our city, really leading the way. Thank you for being here. And Reverend Mariama White-Hammon, you also wear many hats. I know you are here today because you have matters on the docket that you care about. You're also our Chief of Environment, Parks and Open Space, and we are really grateful for your service, but we also know that you are rooted in the work because of your moral and religious compass. As a leader of New Roots, the congregation that you lead, we are lucky to have you here today in this interfaith prayer. So I welcome you all to the mic, and you all can decide on who goes first.
We didn't decide, we were told.
Okay.
It's an honor to be back again, and together with faith leaders. I know I speak on behalf of my colleagues when I say, rather than faith leaders, it's actually our faith that leads us and inspires us to serve. I was asked to comment briefly on Judaism as part of this. Judaism began with our patriarch Abraham, our matriarch Sarah, the first Jews. We're rejecting idol worship, we're originators of monotheism, and the three Abrahamic faiths, Judaism, Christianity, and Islam, with their belief in one God, passed down for generations to Moses, who received the Torah, the Holy Bible, the original testament, the source of religions which followed, and which represents the universal values of honesty, decency, truth, justice, mercy, humanity, peace, love, and unity. In Christianity, there would be no New Testament without an Old Testament, and in Islam, the Quran references Abraham, Moses, Jesus, and others. And so is one humanity. Let us pray, together, to the one God.
May I please ask everyone to stand? Thank you.
Dear Lord, we come before you today asking humbly for your blessings, for your help, and for your inspiration. We pray that you inspire us to work together cooperatively for all of our faiths, all of our communities, and our city, recognizing the importance of the issues that we address and the people that we all serve. For the world, we pray for the fulfillment of Isaiah's prophecy, that swords be beaten into plowshares, spears into pruning hooks, that nation not lift up sword against nation, and that we know not war anymore. But in our city, our responsibility to fulfill Isaiah's prophecy is to make peace on the municipal level by beating swords into snowplows and spears into garbage trucks, that we be not objectionable to one another, nor learn dissension anymore, but rather build schools in our hearts and in our city to teach and to educate each other and our children in our faith traditions and life. Bless us, O Lord, with the wisdom and divine guidance that we need to serve, and thank you for your loving care for all of us, for our families and loved ones, and our magnificent city. Amen.
Creator, we thank you for this opportunity to stand together, three sibling traditions, each trying to understand how we live in a way that honors the amazing gift of life that you have given to each and every one of us. God, in this season, our tradition is in the midst of a period of reflection where we recognize that you came and gave of yourself in such amazing and transformational service, that you are willing to live among us, to struggle with those things that challenge us, and, God, that you call us to do the same. And so during this season, we ask that you renew our sense of purpose, that we, for those of us who are fasting, might choose the fast that Isaiah speaks of, the fast that calls for justice, the fast that asks us to put away our desire to be seen by others, our desire to be lauded, and instead that we might choose to live in service to those among us who are struggling. We pray also for this council, who represent all of the different parts of our city. We thank you for the beautiful diversity of experience, of opinion, of neighborhood that is reflected here. God, we pray that even in this session and beyond, that you would give them the wisdom to show us how to live in our great diversity, and yet continue to move forward the deep purpose to which we are called. We pray that not just for the council, but in every classroom, in every workplace, in every election space, all throughout our city and beyond, that we might more deeply understand who we are called to be and to walk in peace together. And so we pray that you will continue to transform us into instruments of peace in all that we do, and that we might truly seek justice, most specifically for those who are struggling. We ask all of this in whatever name by which we know you. For me, it is Jesus the Christ. Amen.
I'm going to recite the seventh often repeating verses in the Quran in its original language. With Allah's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, alhamdulillah, all praise is due to Allah, the Lord of everything and existence. We gather here today in this esteemed city hall to deliberate and make decisions for the betterment of our community. O Allah, the most compassionate, most merciful, please guide our city leaders to serve the people with justice, fairness, and compassion. Grant wisdom and understanding to our leaders so that they may make decisions that uphold the values of righteousness and equity. O Allah, we seek your blessings upon this city and its residents. Help us foster unity, tolerance, and understanding among all members of our diverse community. May our actions be a source of goodness for everyone, regardless of their background or beliefs. O Allah, inspire us to work towards the welfare of the marginalized and vulnerable in our society. May our efforts contribute to the well-being and prosperity of all people. We ask for your guidance and protection for those who serve in our city hall. Bless them with strength and integrity as they carry out their responsibilities. Grant them the wisdom to lead with justice and compassion. O Allah, make this city a beacon of harmony where people of different faiths and backgrounds coexist peacefully. Strengthen the bonds of brotherhood and sisterhood among us. As we gather in this hall, we recognize that all power and authority ultimately belongs to you. Help us use our positions and resources responsibly, always seeking to serve you and our fellow
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask my colleagues to please join me for a photo, and based with our interfaith clergy, and also based on the feedback from Candace, we're going to take this photo right in front of the clerk's desk. I want to thank Counselor Fernandez Anderson for that powerful interfaith prayer, and I want to thank Grand Rabbi Korff, Imam Ware, and Reverend Mariama White-Hammon for leading us in prayer and in that invocation. Mr. Clerk, can you please note for the record that Counselor Worell has joined us and is present? And we also have former Fire Commissioner Finn, who is here with us. Former Commissioner Finn, thank you for being here as well. This meeting, we have in the audience someone whose father means a lot to us here in the city and who recently passed, Matt Lawler. We think of your father, Richard Patrick Lawler, in this moment of loss, and we dedicate this meeting to him. So thank you for being here with us. And thank you, Counselor Pepe, for that to my attention. We will now have a brief presentation from Counselor Durkin honoring Arthur DeAngelo, and after Counselor Durkin, we will have a presentation from Counselor Murphy honoring firefighter Richard Paris, and I believe Counselor Flynn will also be part of that honoring. So Counselor Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. I'm here with David DeAngelo, representing the DeAngelo family. I filed a resolution in loving memory of Arthur DeAngelo, who we lost last week at the age of 97. I joined the family for a reception on Monday hosted by the Red Sox, where hundreds eulogized, mourned, and celebrated his life. Some of you may know Arthur by name, but I would bet almost everyone here has worn a cap from the company. He started by his twin, started by him and his twin Henry, brothers just nine years after moving to Boston from Italy. Twin Enterprises, now known as 47 Company, is the maker of the beloved Red Sox caps that I left on your desk in December. And the impact and reach of this company they started is a reflection of their love for family, for Fenway, and for Boston. Arthur's legacy and accomplishments are the embodiment of the American dream. Arthur's legacy is woven into the fabric of Boston from the North End, where he and his family settled, to the Fenway, where he and his brother sold newspapers for two cents. An enterprise that quickly expanded to souvenirs and, of course, the brand we know today. Arthur's entrepreneurial spirit ignited a flame that would eventually illuminate the city's sports landscape. His unwavering dedication and excellence and tireless work ethic were exemplified by his continued presence at the flagship location outside Fenway Park. Even in his years later, Bostonians came to know him not just as a businessman, but a beloved community leader, whose impact extended beyond the confines of the successful enterprise. I'm grateful to have his son here today, David, and also want to quote another son, Bobby, who said of his father, "As great as his legacy with his businesses, his legacy is his man's stance way taller." He really built a family, and that was attested to at the ceremony I went to on Monday. In my short time with the family, I can see that. Thank you for everything that you bring to the city of Boston. In 2013, Mayor Menino named a private road that intersects Jersey Street in front of Fenway Park, named Arthur's Way, in honor of Arthur DeAngelo, as a testament to his enduring influence and profound respect he commanded within the hearts of those he touched. Arthur DeAngelo wasn't merely a businessman, he was a symbol of integrity, humility, and devotion. His induction into the Red Sox Hall of Fame in 2018 was a fitting tribute to a man whose passion for sports was only matched by his love for family, his employees, and his community. It was noted on Monday that he has probably attended more Red Sox games than anyone in history, thousands of games. And his commitment to service knew no bounds. He played roles in business from seller to cashier to manager, and he wouldn't think twice about picking up a broom to sweep when needed. He was an incredible man, and I know a lot of people in our city are mourning right now, so want to give a moment for that. But David, would you like to say anything on behalf of the family?
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you for, uh, with Lawrence moving. My father immigrated here when he was 12 years old and started working around Fenway Park. He loved Boston. We built a business, we, my brothers, myself, his brothers, the whole family. He was actually at Fenway Park for over 80 years. Just think about that. Invested in the area, loved the people. He was friends with, to speak to him, I don't want to talk too long, but he was friends with Mayor White, Mayor Menino, the owners of the Red Sox, the vendors around Fenway Park, three generations of peanut vendors, sausage vendors, the commerce people there. It was like, he was the man of the people. Like, you talk about people, say, he was just so humble and gracious and befriended everyone around him. A testament to that was Sharon mentioned, we had a celebration of life for him at Fenway, and my brothers and I said, "Well, how many people are going to be here? I don't know, 100, 200 people? We don't know." There was over 700 people from the city of Boston to celebrate there. My three brothers and I, our 11 grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, and many other relatives were all present, and I thanked some of my friends for coming, and they said, "No, thank you for allowing us to share his life and his story," because there's still a lot to be told, but the stories that we could tell, it was so moving, and I wish you all could have known him, and it was just a great, great man, and he's going to be missed, but the memories will live on forever, and we hope it stays that way. Thank you very much, Counsel.
So on behalf of the Boston City Council, we extend our deepest sympathy, and today we'll stand in remembrance of him. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Your father sounds like an incredible man, and may his memory be a blessing. I would now like to call on Counselor Murphy, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Flynn. You now have the floor.
Thank you. And before we get to why we're here, I do want to include our new colleague, who will be saying his maiden speech, but he represents High Park, so I would like him to join us. Thank you, Counselor Pepe. And could you please, Richie, come up with us? I'll start by saying, I was going to prepare a speech, I was thinking about what to say, and it was the phone calls I made to people that I realized there was really no need for speech, that seeing who's in this room today, we have Commissioner Finn, Commissioner Dempsey, our current Commissioner Burke, like, all of them didn't even question, they just cleared their schedule. I know we've been joined now by a dear friend of yours, former Counselor McCarthy, thank you for coming. We also, Rabbi Korff, when I invited him, because he's the chaplain for the Boston Fire Department, he told me, Counselor Tanya Anderson, that he was already coming, so he's also staying on to make sure he's here to honor you, Richie. And we have our dear friend Eddie Kelly, a neighbor of mine, a good friend, who was the past president to 718 and is the current international president, so thank you for being here. And so many colleagues of his are here, so thank you so much. And I just want to make sure, I know Counselor Flynn and Counselor Pepe will say other wonderful things about you, but thank you, Eileen. We know when people are in this service, especially first responders, the family doesn't see you for many days, and there's a lot of stress, and you gave your husband to us for 38 years, and I know that you're not even sure if you're ready to go, but you know you have to. But one thing I do know about you, you love your family. I always love seeing the pictures of you with your grandchildren, and so you have a wonderful life ahead of you.
Thank you.
We will miss you here in the city, but just definitely want to make sure that, you know, 38 years on the Boston Fire Department, but you're also the longest-serving president of the local 718. So not only have you been there as a firefighter, keeping us safe, you've kept your colleagues safe, and making sure that they were represented the way they should be. So thank you so much for that. I'll pass it off to Counselor Flynn now.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy, and I'm honored to be here with all of my council colleagues. And I know one of our colleagues, former colleagues, wanted to be here as well, is Counselor Flaherty, who also had a great deal of respect for Richie and for the local 718. But we're honoring Richie Paris and his commitment to the residents of Boston for so many years of service to our city and to the residents, but we're also honoring his family, because during that period of time, Richie, you were not able to attend a lot of events for your kids, you were absent at times, and it's the firefighters' family that really are home, but they also provide strength to this city, to that firefighter, so that he or she can do the job. So we're honoring Richie, we're honoring Eileen, but we're also honoring all firefighters and their families for their commitment, dedication, service, sacrifice to the residents of Boston. So Richie, we respect you, we respect the work that you have done. You've been an excellent neighbor, you've been an excellent firefighter, and Boston's fortunate to have dedicated and wonderful firefighters like you, and like the men and women that are here with us today as well. So we wanted to wish you best of luck, congratulations, and we're proud of you, Richie, but we're also proud of your family as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
the men and women on the Boston Fire Department. And I really, I was part of a team, and I just want to thank that team. And I wouldn't have been able to get it done. Eddie was my president, and I was president for 10 years. But the former Commissioner Joe Finn, Commissioner Dempsey, and today's Commissioner Paul Burke, I've worked with all three of those guys out in the field and even in other parts of the job, even with the union. My friend Johnny Sarrow, Billy Reagan, Paul McGurney. Appreciate you coming today, I really mean a lot. It's, it was a great job. I'm going to stay involved. Union men don't die, they keep fighting. And I just want to, I have to say this, because I wouldn't have been able to do it if it wasn't for my family, four kids. My two daughters, one married to a policeman, a physician assistant, and a union sprinkler fitter. And my son, who just got on, he served four years in the United States Marine Corps, and he's now a Boston firefighter up in Grove Hall, continuing the tradition. And he loves the job, it's the best job in the world, it's a family. The men and women in the Boston Fire Department, the city of Boston's got the best fire department around town. But there's one person I really have to thank is my best friend. For 42 years, I've been married to her. I wouldn't have been able to do it without her, and she always gave me the green light. Do it, you do what you want to do. As Enrique say, "Two in the morn," she listened to the radio beside the bed since 2008, because I was vice president, and Eddie and I always had that radio. And I want to thank you very much, and I love you. Thank you.
Could my colleagues join us? But also, everyone who has come for Richie to join us in the photo would be wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, we'll go down in front of the desks.
Yeah, all former city councilors, too. Please come down. Oh, don't take it. Now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of February 28, 2024. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the last meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from Her Honor, the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0459 and 0460 together? Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0459 and 0460 together? Thanks, Megan.
Docket number 0459, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year '24 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $2,945 to provide funding for the Boston Police Department for fiscal year '24 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the New York Typographical Union, CWA Local 14156, and docket number 0460, message in order for a supplemental appropriation order for various departments for the fiscal year '24 in the amount of $2,945 to cover the fiscal year '24 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the New York Typographical Union, CWA Local 14156. The terms of the contract are July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2027. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% to be given in January of each fiscal year of the contract term, and a flat amount of $500, $250, $900, and $800 to be added to annual salaries in January of each fiscal year after the 2% increase filed in the office of the city clerk March 4, 2024.
Thank you. Dockets number 0459 and 0460 will be referred to the committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0461?
Docket number 0461, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,650,633.20 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '24 State Elder Lunch Program awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund nutrition services for older adults in the city of Boston at a rate of $7.39 per meal for up to 358,679 meals.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Seeing the amount of this grant, it would definitely be one that should go into committee and have a hearing to talk about the importance of this. I've spoken to many people, including Reverend, thank you for our phone call, and definitely people closely connected to the YMCA and others who will benefit directly from this money. So I am also just wanted to uplift, I know the first few meetings, Counselor Flynn, you have asked to put things into committee and not just suspend and pass, and I think it has sent a message that this body, this honorable body, does deserve conversations and information going forward on this important, you know, the things we pass here matter to people. So I am asking, as the chair of the committee, I assume it would go into that we do suspend and pass today, but also hoping that we continue going forward, having conversations about the important work this money will do. And I'm hoping my colleagues will join me in that. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0461. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0462?
Docket number 0462, message in order for your approval in order authorizing the city of Boston to modify the expenditure in the amount of $2,500,000 previously accepted by the city council on July 13, 2022 to support municipal infrastructure for food waste disposal. Such grant payment was made from the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery from in the Treasury of the United States, established by Section 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Louie Jean. This order we have before us is a modification for a $2.5 million of ARPA funds allocated for, to support municipal food, sorry, municipal infrastructure for food waste disposal. I was grateful to speak with Chief White-Hammond last week about this money and learned that unfortunately, this city is not prepared to spend this money in the format allocated by 2026. A hurdle to the original allocation of this money, though, can be positively seen as an opportunity to support a responsible, sustainable, and equitable food landscape in the city of Boston. Instead of using money on municipal compost infrastructure, which is not, which is not possible at this time, we have the opportunity to relocate this money towards food recovery efforts. Given that COVID-19 pandemic underscored food insecurity across our city, I think it's important that we use COVID dollars to continue to support food recovery efforts. Along that same vein, I'd like to recognize Counselor Coletta, who's done a lot of work on food recovery and issues, and want to give her a chance to speak on this as well. But I will be moving to suspend and pass today.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Durkin as well. I am moving to respectfully ask my colleagues for a suspension and passage of this docket. This is the culmination of a year's worth of work in partnership and deep partnership with Chief Mariama White-Hammond and Eliza Wasserman out of Food Justice. So thank you so much for your work on this. This is, this is huge, this is transformative. Every one of my colleagues knows how dire the need is to address hunger in their respective districts. Organizations doing the hard work are struggling to meet demand in part because of a lack of food storage in their facilities or neighborhoods. Programs like the YMCA, ABCD, and others rely now on the Grocery Bag Program, a pandemic-era funding source with an emphasis on delivery that will soon run out. Many individuals don't have, and organizations don't have, the cold storage space for perishable essentials like meat and fresh veggies to continue this program on their own. The modification of the use for these funds is a systemic solution to this problem. These funds would be utilized to lease or rent a building once owned by Amazon, that is 5,500 square feet of cold storage. It is extremely rare for a space of this size to have this amount of cold storage go on the market. This would change the game here for soup kitchens and food access organizations, as they now would have a centralized food storage hub, similar to those in Milan, Italy, to obtain donated or recovered, safe-to-consume food. The best part is, is that they don't have to rely on refrigerated truck schedules and their delays. They can simply access this hub at a time that works for them and their dispersal days. I'm mainly thinking of the East Boston Soup Kitchen, who only gives food out on Tuesdays, but it depends on the food delivery trucks to get there on time. This money was allocated to address food waste here in Boston. This use is achieving similar outcomes with less of a focus on the back end of composting and more on how to reduce food waste from the outset. The urgency around this suspension and passage resolves around the fact that this desired space has other bidders who have said that they would remove the cold, the precious cold storage. This is an opportunity for Boston to lead on food recovery and a first step towards realizing a food hub model across the city. Personally, I'm thrilled to see this come to fruition after introducing an ordinance last year in partnership with Counselor Arroyo. Shout out to him for his work on this as well, and solved a lot of the problems that we had identified, the logistical and infrastructure issues through conversations and hearings and working sessions with this body. So again, I respectfully ask my colleagues to suspend and pass this ordinance. Just want to shout out everybody who's been a part of trying to get this, to get this proposal to the floor today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. The chair recognizes Counselor Fernand J. Anderson. Counselor Fernand J. Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to thank Chief White-Hammond for all of her work on this as the district counselor, District 7 counselor, where the warehouse is actually, the storage is actually housed. I'm asking all my colleagues if you are thinking about, you know, pushing this to a hearing. We have done a whole lot of work on this, Roxbury being the second neighborhood that suffers from the most food forests, I mean, food deserts after Mattapan. I would ask that you reconsider, if you're even remotely thinking about postponing this. So asking you kindly, support this, it's needed. It's going in a disenfranchised, majority-black neighborhood. Respectfully, as the district counselor, District 7 counselor, I'm asking you to suspend and pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernand J. Anderson. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I had the opportunity to talk to not only Counselor Coletta and several other council colleagues about the critical importance of funding this refrigeration service. I think it's critically and desperately needed. We also, several years ago, recognized the great hunger, the great famine in Ireland, as people starved to death in Ireland, and the impact it has had on generations of Irish families and their support of food justice, food access for struggling families. I'm here to support this docket in allowing it and ensuring that it should go forward today. I also understand that it is a lot of money. Usually, the city council would have, traditionally would have a hearing on this, but I think under these circumstances, it is important that the funds be allocated in a timely manner so residents can get the food, so residents can get the justice that they deserve. Like Counselor Fernandez-Anderson mentioned, I also represent a district where food justice and food access is critical. Many in Chinatown, especially our immigrant neighbors in Chinatown, often go without food. They go without nutritional meals because they don't have the money. And I see them frequently out in front of the cathedral church in line waiting to get, to get food. I also see residents in public housing throughout my district as well waiting in line for, for food. So I'm here to support this and want to, again, want to thank the advocates that reached out to me over the last day, letting me know how important this is, including my friends at EBA, which is Villa Victoria in the South End, that also do incredible work on food access, food justice issues. But having heard the explanation from Counselor Coletta, I think it's appropriate that we do fund this today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The chair recognizes Counselor Meheer. Counselor Meheer, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues for bringing this to the moment, right? And I'm really excited to hear that my colleagues are also supporting this, because as someone who faced food insecurity growing up, I know how difficult it is to stand in line and hope and pray that you're going to be able to have something to eat. And during COVID, our office worked in deep partnership with a lot of local bodegas and nonprofit organizations and created a whole program to address food insecurity. So as we're looking at how we are utilizing our funds, I'm from the same school of thought, we definitely have a process in place. But given, given the urgency and given what this is, I'm going to do, I think that we all have to stand up and rise in support of suspending and passing this today. So I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this to the floor. And I also want to thank Chief Hammond for your fierce advocacy. I don't think anyone knows how hard it is to work for people who are often unseen and unheard, and you do so with so much heart and so much dedication. And I think the city is going to miss you because you bring such a sense of fire. Not too much, but just enough to keep us on our toes. And so just want to thank you for your dedication and your leadership in this space. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also stand to support the immediate spend and passage of this very important docket and to thank Chief Mariama White-Hammond for her leadership on this, and also the work of Counselor Coletta and Counselor Arroyo in our previous session. Just for the folks watching, you know, this is to try and secure a lease on a cold storage infrastructure. And I think, you know, we forget that there's thousands of tons of very nutritious and edible food that's wasted every day because it's destined to go to the landfill. And through the good efforts of so many nonprofits across our city who try and rescue food, food rescue operations, which takes thousands, takes these thousands of tons of perishable food that would otherwise be headed to the landfill, and putting it, collecting it, storing it, and then redistributing it across our city to help our most vulnerable neighbors across the city who are food insecure. So this is an incredible and very valuable use of these ARPA dollars, and I hope that we can suspend and pass today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. I also want to thank Counselor Durkin, as chair, for moving for this, and Counselor Coletta and former Counselor Arroyo for their work on this. I think Counselor Fernand J. Anderson, as a district counselor where this would be located, her words were right on point, that this is, even if it's in your district, it's going to be affecting all of us, and food insecurity is something we need.
affecting all of us, and food insecurity is something we need to combat. And the beneficiaries, Reverend Mariama White-Hammond, he's done a great job of letting us all know why this is important, but it's also the YMCA of Greater Boston, it's also ABCD, it's also Neighborhood Food Action Collaborative and City Fresh Foods that stand to be, really continuing to be partners with us and shepherding the work in fighting against food insecurity. So I want to support my colleagues who are moving for suspension and passage. The chair seeks, would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0462. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Doubt the vote? Mr. Clerk, will you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0462, Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta?
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin?
Yes.
Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana?
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Rorell?
Yes.
Counsel Rorell, yes. Docket number 0462 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Docket number 0462 has been adopted and is passed. Counsel Flynn?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to know, recognize, I know someone else recognized, but yesterday there was a breakfast, legislative breakfast sponsored by ABCD on Beacon Hill, and I just wanted to thank ABCD for the incredible work they do on food access, food justice issues as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please read dockets number 0463 to 0465?
Docket number 0463, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,525,380.77 in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year 24 Nutrition Services Incentive Program awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund the H-Strong Commission's nutrition program that delivers meals to homes of older adults and at congregate sites in the city of Boston. Docket number 0464, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $187,000 in the form of a grant for the East Boston Foundation Fund II awarded by the Massachusetts Port Authority, to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund H-Strong Commission's operations and management of the East Boston Senior Center. Docket number 0465, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $180,000 in the form of a grant for the Creative Aging Program awarded by Guarded Housing Assisted Living, to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund bringing arts programming to older adults in Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and I have to admit, there's so many amazing grants on the docket today dealing with food insecurity, but I did want to thank Denise DeSantos for talking to me on Monday. Tomorrow, there is a hearing for last week's grants that were put into the committee to, and Emily Shea, the commissioner, will be here at 10:00 a.m., and we have added these dockets to it also, so I hope my colleagues join us tomorrow because all of the important grants that we had on the agenda last week, and these will be talked about, and Emily Shea, the commissioner, will be here to address these tomorrow. So looking forward to that hearing and hope my colleagues can join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Dockets number 0463 to 0465 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0466?
Docket number 0466, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $36,615 in the form of a grant for fiscal year 23 Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement State Formula Allocation awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Massachusetts State Police Crime Laboratory, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund training and continuing education for forensic examiners, criminalists, and laboratory personnel.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This grant is very similar to the one that this body voted for, voted to suspend the rules and passed during last week's meeting. That grant, docket number 0389, was also awarded by the U.S. Department of Justice, and both grants are also part of the FY 2023 Coverdale Formula Allocation. They also both similarly fund our public safety investments in our laboratories. This grant today, docket number 0466, will specifically provide $36,615 to fund training and continuing education for forensic examiners, criminalists, and laboratory personnel. The city of Boston has received similar grants in the nears past, which the council has consistently voted to accept. Given the routine and important nature of this grant and the relatively small dollar amount of a little over $36,000, I am seeking my colleagues' support in moving to suspend the rules and pass this grant today so we don't delay our Boston Police Department being able to utilize these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'm not seeking to block this grant, but I just had a question for Counsel Santana as it relates to this grant. I know it's relatively a small amount of money, but do we have an update on how the city of Boston Crime Lab is doing right now? I know this money will fund it, but I did see a report that the Crime Lab in Boston has some challenges. Just wondering if there's an opportunity for Counsel Santana to provide a little bit of background information if we're not, if we're not having a formal hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. The chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Flynn, for your question. That's a general question in terms of how they're doing as an overall, but I'm happy to follow up in an appropriate manner. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair seeks suspension of, the chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I'm not objecting to it, but I do know that the Crime Lab has some challenges that need to be addressed, including a backlog of kits that need to be tested, rape kits that need to be tested. At some point, I would like to have a hearing and talk to people from the Crime Lab and learn about what is happening with these rape kits and are they being tested frequently? I know the state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts tests rape kits quicker than Boston does. I want to know why that is the case, and if we, if we are in need of additional funding for our Crime Lab, I'd like to know that so we can advocate for it during the budget process. So maybe I'll have to call a hearing on that to get, to get answers, but I'm not going to object to suspending and pass, but I, I would like to follow up on how our Crime Lab is doing. I just think even the small amount of money, it does give us an opportunity to ask about critical issues, but that's something I can follow up on my own. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn, and I believe Counsel Santana, I think, happy, I'm sure you all can work together and ask the administration those questions, if not during budget, during a separate hearing or another hearing where you will hold. But those are great questions, and hopefully the administration, I know Denise is here, will be able to get the answers to the questions that you asked because those are very real issues that you elevate. So the chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0466. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0467?
Docket number 0467, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority Core Program for the Boston Community Leadership Academy, 7 through 12 school pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 70B, Section 5. The statement of interest describes and explains the deficiencies within school facility that prevents Boston public schools from delivering their desired educational program.
Thank you. This docket, docket number 0467, will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0468 through 0470?
Docket number 0468, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Richard Claytor as a member of the Commission on Black Men and Boys, expiring on December 31st, 2024. Docket number 0469, notice was received from the mayor, the appointment of Corey Thompson as a member to the Commission on Black Men and Boys, expiring December 31st, 2024. And docket number 0470, notice was received from the mayor, the appointment of Taviz Shale as a member of the Commission on Black Men and Boys, expiring on December 31st, 2024.
Thank you. Dockets number 0468 through, number 0470 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0168 and 0169 together?
Docket number 0168, the Committee on Government Operations, to which it was referred on January 24th, 2024. Docket number 0168, Ordinance with Respect to Honeybees submits a report recommending that the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft. And docket number 0169, the Committee on Government Operations, to which it was referred on January 24th, 2024. Docket number 0169, text amendment to the Boston Zoning Code with respect to honeybees submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass.
Thank you. The chair recognizes, the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Rorell. I will read both committee reports together. So the committee held a hearing on this matter March 20th, 2023, on docket 0138. I'll read that first. The committee held a working session on February 23rd, 2024. Invited panelists included Chris English, Chief of Staff of ISD, Shawnee Fletcher, Director of GRO Boston, testifying on behalf of the administration. During this working session, counselors had the opportunity to speak with the administration to discuss their concerns and suggestions, as well as any further questions still needing clarification. I was joined by my colleagues, Counselor Braden, Counsel Louie Jean, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, and Counsel Flynn. The committee reviewed the language of the ordinance, section by section, line by line. With regard to Section 1C, permit required, application fee, it was decided that this section will be amended to Section 1C, registration fee. It was explained that because beekeeping is allowed as of right in many cities, the sponsor did not want to create an application process, nor did she want to make the process more onerous by adding a fee. However, the sponsor explained that a registration system would ensure oversight and acknowledge the costs that ISD will incur, making sure residents are registered and adhering to the rules promulgated by their department. For those reasons, the sponsor felt that a $25 fee was reasonable as opposed to the original $50 amount fee. With regard to the regulation section, it was stated that increasing the minimum number of hives, as well as their height and size, was meant to increase the breadth of beekeepers covered by the ordinance. In discussing beekeeping practices, it was explained that the ordinance requires adherence to best practices modeled after New York City, where they recently passed similar regulations. The administration explained ISD enforcement mechanisms and stated that once the ordinance goes into effect, ISD will release a Commissioner's Policy Bulletin, which will include the administrative regulations and procedures that the department will need to place to create the operational structure for enforcing the ordinance. It was explained that the bulletin will outline the process through which someone may apply, what documentation, what documentation will be required, how applications will be reviewed and processed, and as well as how complaints will be responded to, how, when, and where violations will be issued, and how to appeal the same. A summary of these amendments are included in your committee report package, but my recommended action as Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, to which the following was referred, docket 0168, is that this docket ought to pass in the new draft. And then moving on to docket 0169, this is the text amendment to Boston Zoning Code with respect to honeybees. The committee held a hearing on this matter March 20th, 2023. The committee also held a working session on February 23rd, 2024. Invited panelists included Christopher English, Chief of Staff, Shawnee Fletcher, Director of GRO Boston, testifying on behalf of the administration. During the working sessions, counselors had the opportunity to speak with the administration to discuss their concerns and suggestions. I was joined by Counselor Braden, Counsel Louie Jean, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, and Counsel Flynn. The committee reviewed the language of the text amendment, section by section, line by line, as well, and it was explained that the text amendment seeks to strike any and all language related to bees and the keeping of bees. The committee briefly reviewed the current regulatory scheme for beekeeping under the zoning code, and it was explained that if a resident is restricted from bees, from keeping bees on their property pursuant to the zoning code, they must submit a long-form building permit application to change the use and occupancy of their property. Denied applicants are then issued a refusal letter and must seek relief through a variance or conditional use permit. It was stated that docket 0169 is a step, is the first step in what was explained as a two-step process to remove the regulation of beekeeping from the zoning code so that it could be added to the municipal code. It is my recommendation as Chair that docket 0169 ought to pass, and I would love to pass it over to the original sponsor.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The chair recognizes the original sponsor, Counsel President Louie Jean. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Counsel Coletta for chairing this working session. I want to also give a big thank you to the advocates. This issue came to me, and it came to me. I want to also thank State Representative Rob Consavo because he's the one who brought High Park resident Val Mayo, who comes from a long line of beekeepers that stretches back to her grandfather in South Africa, brought this issue to our attention because beekeeping in most of the city is actually a forbidden use. What we're trying to do here is move the regulation of beekeeping from the zoning code to the municipal code and making it easier for regular people to be beekeepers in the city of Boston. So a big thank you to Val Mayo and Larry Vanda Venter from the Boston Area Beekeepers, Bill Perkins at Agricultural Hall in Jamaica Plain, Noah Wilson Rich, Best Bees, Inc., and Jim Kirkher, former resident and constituent. When we all, we had a robust hearing on this last year and worked, tried to work a lot with the administration to get the kinks out, to get the move of zoning to the code right. And I also want to thank, on that note, the administration for their help and hand in helping craft this unique solution, Reverend Mariama White-Hammond, Brian Glasscock and Yari Cortez at the BPDA, Chief Irish, Shawnee Fletcher at GRO Boston, and Chief of Staff, Chris English. Special shout out to Shawnee, who has been very supportive of urban agriculture and all of the ways that we can support beekeeping and other forms of supporting local, locally-produced products here. When I first introduced this hearing last year, I said to all of you to look under your desk and that there was honey for all of y'all, and I was lying.
Oh.
But city council is abuzzing. I want all of my colleagues to look under your desk. It's my Oprah moment.
There you go.
Got some honey. So I want to thank, for those of you, there's Best Bees from Leonard Lee. He's a beekeeper in Dorchester. His honey is there. And for those of you who have the other bottle, that is from Agricultural Hall, that's from Bill Perkins in Jamaica Plain. And so they are all very much excited about this. I want to thank Leonard Lee, who was himself returning from South Africa and worked really hard to make sure that he had the honey ready for us. It's Ruth's Bees, named after his mother, Ruth, and he often is, he's often with this honey at the Codman Square Farmers Market. So shout out to all of our local beekeepers who worked with our offices, office in conjunction for this legislation. And Counsel Braden, I promised you some honey, so there you go. See, our chambers are abuzzing. Honeybees, for, many of you know, because we've had these hearings, but after an extensive hearing last year and a working session, most of my colleagues are familiar with the vast benefits of bees and beekeeping, but for those who want to remember, honeybees play a critical role in our food system and pollinate over 85 different crops and contribute to 35% of global food production. Honeybees significantly contribute to the biodiversity within urban cities by supporting and strengthening plant, garden, and tree growth through pollination, and studies suggest that urban beekeeping might play a critical role in supporting both the city and a species where urban beekeeping can provide new alternative spaces for honeybees to maintain healthy urban environments. The idea was simple, would-be beekeepers shouldn't have to submit a long-form permit to 1010 Mass. Ab just to get rejected and then wade through a complex zoning board of appeals process, all to keep bees. Many residents and businesses in Boston are already keeping beehives, either on their rooftops or backyards, as the local interest in beekeeping greatly increased during the pandemic. By moving this to the municipal code and making a simple registration process, residents can become can become urban beekeepers. If passed, this will now go to the zoning commission for approval. On a personal note, my office, we are all now bee enthusiasts. We've done a lot of work in crafting this legislation, meeting with advocates, holding a meeting with the administration. However, at the end of the day, this is not really just about bees. This is about government getting in the way of bureaucratic regulations and making things simpler for our residents. Residents want to do the right thing, and we need to make that possible. It's also about supporting our biodiversity, wildlife, and in urban, and our urban environment, and recognizing our place within a larger ecosystem. It's about remembering that the small things, like bees, can have a big impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Would anyone else like to speak? Counselor Fernandez Anderson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam President, thank you so much for this, all of this work. I've never seen an ordinance turn into such an adventure, an exciting one. Thank you for the honey. You're going to be an amazing mother in the way that you execute all of this, and the treats, and the organizing, and so well-coordinated.
There was no reveal there.
For the record. I was, I was saying that you, I can, I can tell that you are an amazing family person. I'll just sit down now. Great job.
Boston, you heard it here first. No, I'm joking. But thank you, Council President Louie Jean. You have set the bar. You know, if we're passing ordinances, we have to give gifts now. Thank you. Councilor Coletta, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0168. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0168, Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, yes. Council Durkin. Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Fitzgerald. Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn. Council Flynn, yes. Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mejia. Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy. Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin. Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana. Council Santana, yes. Council Weber. Council Weber, yes, and Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 0168 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you, Clerk. The committee report on docket number 0168 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Government Operations seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0169. Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0169, Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, yes. Council Coletta. Council Coletta, yes. Council Durkin. Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Fitzgerald. Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn. Council Flynn, yes. Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mejia. Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy. Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin. Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana. Council Santana, yes. Council Weber. Council Weber, yes, and Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 0169 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. The committee report on docket number 0169 has passed. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. We'll be taking two dockets out of order. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0467, 0476, and 0477?
Docket number 0476, Council Peppin offered the following: Order for a hearing on technological improvements in Boston school bus transportation. And docket number 0477, Council Peppin offered the following: Order for a hearing to explore the creation of safe school zones to improve pedestrian safety around all schools in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Peppin for his maiden speech.
Thank you, Madam President. For our beginning, I just want to give a quick shout out to some residents I see from District 5. Thank you so much for being here. To my family, to my wife, my sister, my dad, my uncle, thank you for being here. You know, the, the topic that I'm speaking on today is very important to the district, but more important to the city. Ever since I can remember, no matter the job, there has been one topic that has resonated with me more than other, and that is transportation. Whether we walk, bike, drive, or take the T, it is literally what brings us from point A to point B. During my time as Community Engagement Coordinator at Transportation for Massachusetts, I learned to view transportation from a different perspective, from the lens of public health. There, I was able to understand that if we do not get transportation right, if residents feel unsafe crossing the street, or if drivers are not respecting the speed limits, it impacts one's well-being and creates a sense of anxiety across our communities. This sentiment has only strengthened when I campaigned for this seat and now in office. On average, eight out of 10 encounters I have with residents discuss the fear of transportation safety. This was further exemplified after road tragedies of our young Bostonians prompting conversations about the need for drivers to slow down, especially near our schools, where children spend most of their time. The BPS Long-Term Facilities Plan, which was published this past December, only mentions the word "transportation" three times in its 80 pages, and it was not about the street safety, or more so about the community assessment and funding. We need to acknowledge that school time starts when a student begins and ends their commute. A passage their guardian should be able to trust will be completed safely. In November of 2023, a staff member at the Sumner School was hit by a speeding driver on Cummins Highway while assisting students to cross the street. Residents on Glendale Ave and Cornell Street in Rosendale have endlessly advocated for speed humps and safety measures to slow vehicles down as children are constantly walking around to attend the Bates or the Connolly School. These improvements would have stopped a car from flipping over on Cornell Street in late November due to speeding. In Hyde Park, Austin Street and Summer Street are treated as speedways, causing the abutting residents to fear leaving their driveways despite both streets being near the Brew School. On February 1st, I joined parents on the corner of Washington Street and Albanal Street in Rosendale to wait for their children's school bus from the Hernandez School during drop-off. The parents reached out to our office to express the possible fear that their children, our community's children, may not make it home from school one day because of the difficulty of safely crossing Washington Street. I watched in horror with these parents when the bus arrived and a driver zoomed past the stop sign to avoid the red light. What made us all share outrage was that the bus driver did their job according to protocol, and yet there is nothing they can do to hold the drivers accountable for not adhering to the bus stop sign. At that same intersection, but at 6:30 a.m. before pickup, Ms. Ramirez waits outside with six-year-old son, not knowing where the exact timing of the bus pickup will be. She sometimes follows the school bus, the school bus tracking website, which has either led her to the wrong locations or given the wrong timing before causing her son to arrive late or even miss school. Ms. Ramirez would love to have more accurate, in-time information to rely on for her busy mornings, but has resorted to waiting on the street out of fear that these mornings could halt the whole day. Unfortunately, there is a pattern regarding all the examples I provided. Our children are the ones facing the consequences when they should be experiencing safe, quality transportation from point A, their homes, to point B, their schools. As a former BPS student and a father of two future BPS students, I want to ensure that all students, parents, guardians, and staff members feel safe while commuting to and from school. This is why today I am filing two hearing orders that addresses the uneasiness and concerns of parents not only who live in Hyde Park, Mattapan, and Rosendale, but across our entire city. One for the creation of safe school zones and another to discuss technological improvements of the Boston Public School Bus. First, the creation of safe school zones to have a uniform set of road standards across the city that will enhance the safety of our communities. Currently, the only set rules for school zones is a speed limit of 20 miles per hour, which has created inequalities as some schools have highly effective rectangular rapid flashing beacons versus some, like the Chittick School, have only one standard sign. If we as a city are moving forward with a Green New Deal for BPS, that conversation must include an audit of the streets surrounding the schools. The administration has started the Safety Surge Initiative, bringing proven speed reduction measures such as speed humps, updated signals, and intersections in our neighborhoods. These upgrades, including raised crosswalks at main intersections with updated flashing crossing signs, restricted lane and street usage during school times, and restricted parking near school sidewalks, should be immediately implemented around our schools to ensure equity throughout the city. The safety school zones will not only encompass street infrastructure, but will also highlight that there are over 30 crossing guard openings. That means there are over 30 major intersections left unattended when students are crossing the street. Creating these zones will also enhance a partnership with the State Mass dot Safe Roads School Program, where our regional, where our only regional representative, Mattapan's own Vivian Ortiz, teaches students across the greater Boston area to safely cross the street and be aware of their surroundings. Second, now is the time to invest in the humble school bus, the first interaction many of our city's children have with public transportation. Improving the technology on this bus will not only alleviate parents' and guardians' anxiety, but start holding people accountable for not respecting the bus. Currently, the bus locating tracking system BPS uses is a website model that does not update quickly nor has a way to communicate with the driver or monitor. In this day and age where we can track food deliveries in real time, like Uber Eats and DoorDash, I believe we should have the same quality of technology to be able to track where our children's bus is and give real-time updates on the road status for the bus driver to avoid accidents or street damages. Guardians should also be able to send notifications to BPS alerting the bus driver if their child is sick or does not require transportation that day, helping the bus driver to do their job more efficiently. I'm also asking my colleagues to consider joining our state legislator in installing cameras on the stop signs on the school buses to capture and find vehicles that violate the bus stop sign. Nearby city PBID launched a pilot earlier this school year for observation purposes with no fines attached, installing 10 stop-arm cameras on school buses. And they found that more than 850 vehicles illegally passed off school buses within the first five weeks. 850 vehicles driving past school buses with young children just trying to, just trying to cross the street to and from school. It is inexcusable that on a daily basis, drivers avoid important signage, putting the lives of children at risk and getting away with it. It is time to hold those dangerous drivers accountable through aggressive enforcement and fines, and we need the legislator to pass bill S-2275, an act relative to school bus safety cameras, so we can do so in our city. My intention in filing these hearing orders is to strengthen our transportation infrastructure, alleviate stress for our families during commuting hours, and ensure that our schools are safe environment for our future generation of Bostonians. Our biggest priority in this chamber should be to ensure the safety of our children, and that starts by ensuring that they can arrive safely at the place they spend the most time at. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilor Peppin. You're now fully unleashed, and we have now a fully unleashed body, so congratulations. Would you like to take a photo with whoever is here?
Yes.
If you would like to.
With my family.
Once again, congratulations, Councilor Peppin, on a really important maiden speech. I live around the corner from the Chittick, and that community really, really has been advocating for quite some time for a lot of what you mentioned, so thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations, Councilor Peppin, on an incredibly wonderful speech and a very, very important topic. I had a very close mess when I was a kid in school, getting off a school bus. In those days in Northern Ireland, we didn't have stop signs on the bus. And one of my young neighbors, a young kid called Adrian, he was in a hurry to get, he got off the bus, he walked across the front of the bus and stepped into the lane, and he was hit by a car. He had a brain injury and a broken leg. It just happened like that. And I really feel this is, this, this, this work is so important, and we have a really incredible responsibility to improve safety for our young people, especially as they travel back and forward to school every day. We had a young man killed on Cambridge Street in Brighton in Alston a few years ago. He was running to get to a bus to come to school, go to school. I think he was going on an MBTA bus, but he ran across a crosswalk and was hit and killed crossing the street. We have a, we have a, an early learning center in Washington Street, the Baldwin School, which is incredibly dangerous roadway there at Washington Street, and it's, there's so much work to do. So, we really applaud your leadership on this and count on me as a partner in trying to improve safety for our young people. And also, the city of Boston spends more on transporting their children to school than any other municipality in the country. We spend over $150 million transporting our kids. So, there's certainly not a lack of money. It's, it's really about putting our minds to it and really with intention, intentionality, just make this happen so that we can track where our kids are and ensure that they get to school on time and make sure they're safe, all of those things. So, thank you so much for your leadership and I look forward to working with you on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilor Peppin, it's just incredible to see you rise in the ranks, first starting as a staffer. Again, we have our little crew here where we all got a chance to know one another, and I'm just so proud of you. Just congratulations. I'll quickly say that it has been such a joy to witness you in, in, in many different roles and see your light shine bright, but in two specific ones. First, your role as public servant and what you've been able to accomplish already, working for the city of Boston and, and other elected officials, but your role as a dad and how the latter informs the first, and it just really is an absolute pleasure to see you operate and look forward to working with you on this and many other issues. with you on this and many other issues. Congratulations.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Santana. Councilor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I rise to congratulate mi hermano Enrique, Councilor Pepe, and an amazing, amazing maiden speech. And it's such an important topic. As Chair of the Situation and Public Safety, I know the importance of the safety of our youth, and as many of you know, you know, I in 2016 lost a brother due to a car accident, so this is something that's very personal to me in terms of just the safety of our, of all residents. So I congratulate you on a, on a terrific speech and bringing in such an important topic up to light. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Santana. The chair recognizes Councilor Weber. Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to congratulate you, Councilor Pepe, as, as a parent of two BPS kids, someone who's been walking kids through Jamaica Plain to elementary school for about 15 years now, and someone who lives about 150 feet from the Curly. I just want to thank you for pushing for a safer environment for our kids and very well done on the speech, and I look forward to working with you on this very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. Councilor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Councilor, Council President, and thank you so much, Councilor Pepe. Can't wait to work with you. I know as the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, all the things that you care about are things that we'll be handling in our committee, and I'm just so excited to have the opportunity to deliver for BPS kids on the promise that everyone should have, you know, safe commutes. And I think your experience as someone who has two kids that will be in the school system, you're approaching this with so much urgency, and you approach everything with so much earnest, and you're a good person who approaches just this job with so much compassion, and we're so lucky to serve with you. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for, I'm excited that we've got to start along at the same time. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Durkin. The chair recognizes Councilor Fitzgerald. Councilor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor Pepe, I just want to say, my dear colleague, you did a fantastic job. Congratulations. As a father of two as well at Boston Public Schools, I realize that safety is not just within the walls, but also outside those walls. And I have the, I have the fortunate opportunity to walk my children to school. We have a great relationship with the Crossing Guard, so if anyone is looking for a job at those, you, you develop a lot of friends being the Crossing Guard, and it's a great gig, and you're a community stalwart in that. So just wanted to say thank you for listening to the families of Boston Public School parents, and thank you for listening to the city in general. I look forward to working with you, brother.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and want to congratulate Councilor Pepe on his inaugural speech and congratulate his, his family as well for the sacrifice and support they provided you for so many years, Councilor Pepe. You have a wonderful family. Listen closely to the speech Councilor Pepe talked about, and pedestrian safety is really an issue that impacts all of us, especially our young people that are in BPS or in other schools as well. But I also wanted to highlight the, the older people in our, in our city too that are often in crosswalks whilst walking across the street. They might be going to the market, they might be going to the, the public library like my parents. And my parents are in their 80s, and they'll be in the crosswalk, and cars will speed right by them as they're trying to walk across the street. I also see that with mothers and fathers taking their kids to school. They'll be holding their hand, and then a car will have very little regard for them and speed right by them while the family is in the crosswalk. But I think Councilor Fitzgerald is right, the, the heroes also in the city are our crossing guards, and they're putting, they're literally putting their life on their line for our children, for our families. Very little pay, not that, not that that's what we're here to talk about, but these people are, are heroes as far as I'm concerned. I, I also think the speed limit in Boston, 25 miles an hour, I've been advocating for it to be reduced. I think that's excessive, driving 25 miles an hour throughout Boston's narrow neighborhoods. It should be 20 miles an hour or even 15 miles an hour. If you're going 25 miles an hour down a small street in any particular neighborhood in Boston, very difficult to stop at a crosswalk or a stop sign at that rate of speed. But again, want to highlight and thank Councilor Pepe for the maiden speech, but more importantly, for the work he's going to provide on making sure Boston works for everybody. And congratulations, Council, Council Pepe.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Fernanda Anderson. Councilor Fernanda Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I see what's going on here, leaving the best for last. Okay, fine. Councilor Pepe, congratulations. What an amazing speech and laser focus on safety and family makes total sense. I first met Councilor Pepe, is this okay? Okay. And so if you look at my pictures around the campaign, I was running around campaigning, and Councilor Pepe actually volunteered through my team to do my photos. So all of my photos is Mr. Photographer Extraordinaire here. I think he has a hobby. And then got to know you a little bit more as a counselor, and then met your lovely wife and babies, and started to learn more about your personality. I remember we had a conversation where you asked me, what did I think in terms of your journey? And I said, believe in yourself and run if you must. And so like, why are you worried about the rest, right? So I thank you. I look forward to working with you. I appreciate your integrity thus far and looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernanda Anderson. The chair recognizes Councilor Worrell. Councilor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and congratulations. Great maiden speech. I've had the privilege of already seeing you in the community at work. You hit the ground running. You're so young, but you come with so much institutional knowledge that has been helpful for the community already. So looking forward to continue working with you. And safety and school safety on crossing those streets, we have some schools that are, you know, in between Gallivan Boulevard and Morton Street, and those things are like highways, and we constantly hear it from families and teachers, making sure that we're doing our best as a city to make sure that those kids are safe across that street. So thank you for the leadership and looking forward to working alongside of you. And I love the pitch.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor. The chair recognizes Counselor Mahia. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and congratulations, el manito, chiquitico. Really excited to, to see you unleashed, as President Counsel says all the time. Now, all 13 of us are here, so y'all better watch out, because everybody can speak up now. Now, just really excited to, to see you do your maiden speech, and I'm really excited to see the topic that you chose similar to Counsel Fitzgerald, really looking at things that are impacting the city as a whole. Although I may be a district counselor, you are really leaning into things that are impacting us across the city of Boston. And as a parent, and as someone who walked to school when I was a kid, BPS graduate, and I also took the BPS, you know, school bus, I do agree with Counselor Brayden that we have a budget that really does not reflect our values when we're thinking about the, the infrastructure and what we are pouring into transportation, and if safety is not a top priority, then I don't know what should be. And so I really do look forward to working alongside you on moving this issue along. And as, you know, I created an nonprofit organization dedicated to parents, and one of the biggest issues that we always brought to the forefront during the beginning of the school year was issues around transportation, because a lot of our kids were lost, were left behind, and they were, there was really no way for people to be able to report. So really excited that you're going to be joining the chorus of other parents who have been advocating on the other side of this fence, or whatever you want to call this building, to ensure that those voices get heard, and I'm more than happy to connect you to those parents so that we can move things along inside and outside again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mahia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, we're going to take the two dockets separately. So thank, we have docket number zero, yeah, yeah, so I'm going to do that separately to each docket, for each docket, okay. Would anyone like to add their name to docket number 0476? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Brayden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernanda Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Santana, Weber, Worrell, and please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0476, will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Docket number 0477, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Brayden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernanda Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Santana, Weber, Worrell, and please add the Chair. Thank you. Docket number 0477 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Now going back to the, the order, Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0471?
Docket number 0471, Counselors Fernandez Anderson and Worrell offer the following: Ordinance and Amendment to the Boston Municipal Code in regards to measuring racial equity in affordable housing.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Fernanda Anderson. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules and ask to add yourself, Counsel Luizhen, Counsel President Luizhen, as a third co-sponsor.
Counselor Fernanda Anderson, suspension of the rules to add Counsel Luizhen as the third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Luizhen is added as the third co-sponsor.
Madam President, I've been, I appreciate your need and leadership to making sure that we are timely, that we are filing properly and on time and following the rules. So I've been backing up my filing, so just in advance, I'd like to ask you to forgive me, we, I have at least like eight dockets on this agenda. So I apologize in advance, and I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. So as far as docket 07, 0471, and sorry, I wanted to explain. So I filed, and then when there were maiden speeches with my colleagues, I would pull them out and file it again, and then I filed it again, just to make space for folks. And so here today, you see eight, so thank you. So back to docket 0471, I acknowledged the deep-rooted and historic barriers faced by people of color in Boston and working class and across the nation when it comes to homeownership. It's crucial to highlight the stark national disparities in homeownership rates, where Black and Latinx Americans experience lower rates compared to their white counterparts. Homeownership stands as the primary means for families to build and transfer wealth from a generate, one generation to the next, underlining its immense importance. The racial wealth gap in Boston is staggering, with white families boasting a significantly higher average net worth compared to African-American families. I'm expressing deep concern over the disparities in mortgage application approvals, particularly a higher denial rates for Black and Latino, Hispanic applicants, especially in certain neighborhoods. The escalating cost of housing in Boston, making it the second most expensive city in the nation, demands our attention as it significantly affects home prices. So just introducing this as a proactive step toward transparency, aiming to measure the, and disseminate information on how affordable housing initiatives impact racial equity in our city. These ordinance serves the purpose of ensuring that affordable housing not only provides homes, but actively contributes to decreasing racial inequity in our communities. I, I call for my co-counselors to hold a conversation on this matter and hopefully, hopefully getting to the resolution proposed here in this ordinance to pass it eventually. Thank you so much, and I just wanted to say that if I could add another co-sponsor, I would, as my fourth. Counselor Santana expressed solidarity in this issue, and so I appreciate it and looking forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Fernanda Anderson. The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Want to commend Counselor Fernandez Anderson for your leadership on this issue and for adding me as the original co-sponsor. Ensuring equality among all Boston residents, regardless of families or single-resident households, is paramount. Leveraging the resources of both the BPDA and the city development process will be instrumental in achieving this goal. We must create a comprehensive analysis of our housing stock in relation to who is leaving Boston to better understand their purchasing behaviors so that we could take the steps to address the demand. This ordinance has forged a clear framework for monitoring and reporting on the impacts of our housing initiatives, providing a valuable insight to guide our decision-making. It's a forward-thinking approach, and I want to again thank Counsel Anderson for that, for addressing systemic inequities and ensuring that affordable housing serves its intended purposes. We are a city full of people who love this great city of Boston and who want to stay in Boston, and also young people who want to put down roots to establish careers and raise families, and we must make sure that we have the housing to allow them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I'll just be brief. Thank you, Counselor Fernanda Anderson, for adding me here. I think it's a smart ordinance that seeks to measure, disclose, and report on racial equity in affordable housing. It's not only about transparency and accountability, but it's also a way of addressing longstanding disparities that you talked about in your remarks that are really rooted in discriminatory practices and redlining and blockbusting that we really need to try to get ahead of it. We don't get ahead of something if we're not tracking and measuring the data. So I want to thank you for this, for this ordinance. The chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and want to thank Counsel Fernandez Anderson and the makers of this ordinance. We know that the first step to addressing any problem is to acknowledge the problem, and we know that housing affordability in Boston is a problem. We know that most Bostonians can't afford to buy a home, and that pathways to homeownership are limited. We know that historical policies created racial and income segregation here in Boston, and we know that right now, Bostonians continue to have wildly different experiences and outcomes based on income and race. We know all of those things because we have the data. Data is what turns the first step into, of acknowledging a problem into an opportunity to do something about it. That's what this ordinance would do. It would give us more data, it would, it would help us understand how well our investments in affordable housing are working. It would tell us who we're helping and who we're missing, and it would also give us the ability to make wiser decisions. That's exactly what our responsibility should be as a, as a council and as a city. I look forward to working on this together with the sponsors and all my colleagues. Please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Santana. The chair recognizes Counselor Mahia. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues. I'm really looking forward to participating in this hearing. You know, I often talk about the fact that I was the first person in my family to buy a house and get my mom out of Section 8, and I had to take out my entire 401K just to be able to stay in the city that I built. And I say that because I have a lot of sweat and tears in these streets, and so when we're talking about auditing and when we're talking about creating more opportunities for homeownership and looking at how we have been discriminated against, I think that there is an opportunity here for us to look at how even the city is creating harm. We are, you know, talking about affordable homeownership, but then there are deeds restrictions on them that prevent you from building wealth, right? There's lots of conversations to be had if we're talking about really creating opportunities for people to, to have a pathway towards homeownership. And I also think that it's important for us to analyze and, and look at the fact of the matter is that so many of our people are moving out to Brockton and Randolph and other parts of the, of the country, literally sometimes, of the state, just to be able to purchase a home. So I, I look forward to having those discussions and bringing in some of those folks who have been displaced, because we can learn a lot about their journey towards homeownership and affordable housing and access towards it. So looking forward to the dialogue and thank you for your leadership in this space.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Brayden. Counselor Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I also like to thank Counselor Fernandez Anderson for bringing this, this ordinance forward. This undoubtedly a racial equity issue with regard to our housing in the city of Boston. I'd also like to flag up the other important issue that we said, there was a recent headline in the Boston Business Journal, I think, that said that Boston was one of the most desirable markets for outside investors to buy up family homes. And so ordinary folks, ordinary working families in the city of Boston are competing with folks who are cash buyers who come in and buy our home, housing stock as an investment. And that... And that, that, because it's a cash purchase, ordinary folks don't even get a chance to get into the game and even have, even know that the housing is on the market before it's been bought up by an investor. So I really hope that when we have this conversation, that we would broaden it to even just think about the competitors in this market for housing, and if there's anything that we can do to try and make it a more equitable situation, so that ordinary families who want to buy a home and establish a, a stable housing situation that's affordable in the city, don't have to compete with cash buyers. So thank you so much, Councilor Fernandez Anderson, for this, for this ordinance, and I do hope, I look forward to working on this with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Pepe. Counselor Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to commend my council colleague from District 7, because that topic is, is really important to my district. As one of the councilors that represents Matapan, you know, Matapan is that, is the neighborhood with the largest percentage of Black homeownership, and that is something I'm proud of, but it's also something that I want to protect. And it's not, for me, it starts not only in actually purchasing a home and getting a interest rate that is, that is actually doable for a family, but also looking into the future of how we can look at the property taxes as well. So I look former, I look forward to working with you in the future on this topic, because we need to protect our current homeowners and make sure that it just continues to increase in the neighborhoods we call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Pepe, Santana, This docket, docket number 0471, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0472?
Docket number 0472, Councilors Luizhen and Worrell offer the following: Order for a Flag-Raising to Celebrate Montserrat.
Madam President, Counselor Luizhen, you have the floor.
Thank you. I offer this resolution. Thank you, Counselor Braden. I offer this resolution for the flag-raising of Montserrat. I want to thank Meredith Tuitt and Reverend Daley and so many others in the Montserratian community who are uplifting Montserrat. Montserrat is known as the Emerald Isle of the Caribbean, and it possesses a rich and diverse cultural heritage that is deeply rooted in African, Irish, and British traditions. Montserrat is the only country outside of Ireland to celebrate St. Patrick's Day as a national holiday, as a national holiday, and includes honoring an attempted rebellion by enslaved Africans against European colonizers in 1768. Montserrat's St. Patrick's Festival is unique in the Caribbean for its commemoration of Montserrat's Irish heritage alongside the celebration of emancipation. And so we will be raising the flag of Montserrat, a Caribbean, a Caribbean country, on Friday at 1:00 PM, and I am inviting all of my colleagues to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to Madam President for adding me as an original co-sponsor. I also like to recognize Reverend Daley, Meredith Tuitt, Emerald Production, Montserrat Progressive Society of Boston, and Montserrat Aspires for all the contributions of the city of Boston. And again, I just want to echo our council president's invite to the flag-raising taking place at City Hall Plaza Friday at 1:00 PM. Come and enjoy the masquerade and all the great food that's going to be out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. Would any, oh, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As my colleagues alluded, first of all, thank you so much for filing. Montserrat often referred as the Emerald Isle, and of course, as my, as my councilor colleague has mentioned, unique cultural heritage shaped on African, Irish, and British, but also it's, in terms of its flags, with its depiction of the Union Jack and island coats of armor, arms, symbolizes both its colonial history and self-governing territory and the aspiration of its resilient people. I look forward to supporting this and look forward to Friday as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just, I, I'm happy to support this. For anyone looking to support Montserrat, I just refer you to an obscure documentary called The Other Final. A couple activists decided on the date of the 2002 World Cup Soccer Final that they would bring together the two last-ranked teams in the world, and they were Montserrat and Bhutan. Montserrat in part because they were devastated by a volcano, and there were any soccer fields on the island at the time, and they brought a team from Montserrat to Bhutan. So for anyone who hasn't seen it, I assume that's most of the people here, you should check it out. Thank you.
Thank you for the recommendation. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Counselor Coletta, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Pepe, Counselor Weber, and please add my name. Counselor Luizhen seeks, Counselor Luizhen seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0472. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay? The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd just like to clarify for my colleagues that this flag-raising will be on Congress Street, on the Congress Street side, at 1:00 PM on Friday, and there will be a reception afterwards. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0473.
Docket number 0473, Councilors Durkin and Worrell offer the following: Order for a Hearing Regarding a Review of COVID-19 Recovery Funds.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Seeing no objections, Counselor Durkin seeks suspension of the rules and to add Counselor Fernandez Anderson as the original co-sponsor. Seeing no objections, Counselor Fernandez Anderson is so added. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
The city of Boston has until the end of 2026 to spend our ARPA funds, but we only have until December of this year to commit ARPA funds in full. Currently, the city of Boston has 37.1% of total ARPA funds, or 207.5 million, that still need to be committed before the deadline, December 31, 2024. As we approach this deadline for administering and exhausting all COVID-19 recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, we must consider a conclusive plan of commitment and reallocation of funds that will set up successful programs to continue. I'm grateful to Counselor Worrell and Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson for their partnership in co-sponsoring this hearing order to host a discussion aimed directly at that. As evidenced earlier in this meeting, with the modification of a 2.5 million dollars originally allocated to support municipal infrastructure for food waste disposal, and now, and now will be put to use in the food recovery space, it is clear that there are endless opportunities to improve the city with these funds. As Chair of the COVID-19 Recovery Committee, I'm eager to work with my colleagues to determine how best to make those improvements with the money remaining, and I'll also mention the Boston Municipal Research Bureau and their recent report, which I'm excited to dig into. I am losing my voice, so I am just gonna, hopefully my co-sponsors can, can take the rest of this. I'm just gonna be speaking today, at today's meeting, on exactly what's necessary. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Counselor Durkin for your leadership on this and my other co-sponsor, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Our timelines are clear, with ARPA funds to be fully allocated by the end of 2024. We are at a critical juncture. It's time to take stock of our programs, evaluate what has worked, and identify areas where adjustments are needed. We invested as a council and as a city in some great program initiatives, such as Welcome Home Boston, the BHA Section Home Ownership vouchers, the Autory, the City Employee Emergency Housing Relief Fund, and the extension of the free fare bus services till 2026. These programs are symbolic of our commitment to building a resilient and equitable city. And in this hearing, I just want to make sure that we consider the process of how and when the council redirects funds for new programs, such as the order we heard about earlier today for the food recovery infrastructure. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counselor, well, first, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, did you want to speak on, no, okay. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mahia. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues for bringing this forth. I, I think as we continue to move as a body, I'm always going to encourage us to be as transparent as possible. I, I'm not sure where this is going to land, but in the spirit of really auditing, in the spirit of really being transparent, I think it's important for us to make sure that when we're, when we're thinking about these conversations, while I'm not the Chair of Ways and Means, nor the Chair of the COVID Committee, I think it is important for there to be a level of, of, of voice around accountability and transparency, and under that committee falls audit. And I think that if we're going to restore trust in government, which we know that there is some concerns about that, I think that this really creates an opportunity for us to consider where we're placing things in committee. So I am not saying it should go in my committee, I'm just offering a speedy hearing, shall you allow the Chair that to go down? I, I think I'd be more than happy to chair that.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Mahia. I guess that was a question directed towards you. Well, not really. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
I just wanted to say, I, I realize that the COVID-19 Committee was created to deal with ARPA funds, so I think there was a question in this new term whether that committee should continue to exist, and obviously, I was very much advocating for the committee to continue to exist because of these deadlines, December, and then December 2024, and then December 2026. So I, I think it's very clearly written, but, but I, I would love for you to sit up here with me and ask as many questions as you have, because I think, you know, in the interest of transparency, would love to partner with you on asking those questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity yesterday to attend a, an event with Governor Haley, with Congressman Lynch, and with Mayor Wu on $20 million of federal funds that went to New England Center for Veterans, and that was ARPA funds. And I want to acknowledge and thank Congressman Lynch for working to get that money for the New England Center for Veterans, and that money would be used to help to support homeless veterans. And a critical project, but the ARPA funds are important to the city, important to our neighbor, neighborhoods. Madam Chair, who, who is the Chair of the, the, of this committee, the COVID-19 Committee? Counselor Durkin?
Counselor Durkin is the Chair.
The, the only, the only thing I would ask is to, to consider Counselor Mahia's request. I know there is no, there's nothing waiting in her committee. Maybe, maybe having that hearing in her committee might enable us to move the work faster. There's also nothing in, in my committee, too. I'm not saying it should go into the Veterans Affairs Committee, but just ensuring that in the interest of transparency and fairness, we have a committee that's, there is nothing in there, and giving, giving an opportunity for Counselor Mahia to engage on this issue, I think is important. I think it's a, it's a important request. It's, it makes sense, and I, I would go on record in giving that committee transparency, the opportunity to listen and talk about some of these ARPA funds and what impact they, they are having and how they're, how they're helping residents. I would also ask, when this is, when this hearing does take place, when this hearing does take place, if, if we could get a list of all allocations of ARPA funds to the city and how we spent that money, so we have that going into the committee meeting, committee meeting, so we are able to ask relevant questions. So I would like to see if I can get this information prior to the committee meeting, so I can base my questions on that relevant information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. I believe that information is, as she requested it, in the actual hearing order, but I believe that's going to be important information for all of us to have for the hearing. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the COVID, the ARPA funds that we got during the, what they had said of the COVID pandemic offers us a huge opportunity and to really invest in infrastructure across our city that will have lasting benefits for decades to come. It's a little frustrating for me to think that with projects that we have proposed a few years ago are still languishing, they haven't been executed, and the money hasn't been spent. So now is the time, like, we have to really step on the pedals here and get this, get this moving. I think to Counselor Flynn's point, I think it's really important that we have a good accounting of all the different projects that we as councilors proposed, and also projects that the administration proposed for expenditure of these funds. And I really do hope that we can expedite the expenditure of these funds, so that we don't actually lose them and just have to send money back to the federal government. One issue that I would be of concern would be to make sure that our facilities departments and capital planning has the bandwidth to actually expedite the timely expenditure of these funds, and that they don't languish, because just we don't have enough project managers or folks who can move these projects forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I can appreciate the, not confusion, but challenge of if it's an audit, if we are talking about an issue, but there is a committee specifically for COVID ARPA funds. And so it is, you know, sometimes we sort of, there's a thin line between whether it goes to this committee or that committee, but, and I can appreciate that Counselor Mahia's committee does not have hearings, but that's certainly, in my opinion, not a good, not a good point to move it to Counselor Mahia's committee. I would appreciate it if we could just move forward to keeping it in COVID-19 Committee and then, you know, or ARPA, I'm sorry, what's the name of the committee?
It's the COVID-19 Recovery Committee.
COVID-19 Recovery, and then just have the conversation there. And in terms of projects, so what I do is follow up, and, you know, the administration or its cabinets are probably tired of me, and I'm trying to make, be as sweet as possible in my follow-up with everyone, in terms of like, meeting with people, where are the projects at, but also in your conversations with allocations, just create the job itself. So for new folks, you probably know this already, but if you're going to make amendments, think about those people that you do have to create to follow through. So, for example, I filed a hearing order for us to like, actually publish, it wasn't a hearing order, sorry, it was an ordinance, to publish our voting records. The issue there was, okay, who's going to do it after? So always with an ordinance, think of those project managers to follow up, and then meet with each department. I think the departments have done a great job thus far. So Counselor Braden, offering myself to sort of show you how I've been able to like, manage that, and then hired specifically project manager, just to follow it up with like, all of the projects that I know impact my district, to be able to follow the money. Looking forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to correct, I just took a look at the, oh, Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I, I do agree with Counselor Fernandez Anderson that because Counselor Mahia doesn't have something in her committee, that really is not a reason to put something in, in her committee. I, I understand that. That makes, that makes sense. But I, I do question, I do question the ability for But I do question, I do question the ability for all of us, some of us, to engage in this discussion in a fair way. For example, some council colleagues have two, chair of two committees, and others have a chair of one committee, and the chairs of one committee, we have limited work to Like my committee, Veterans Affairs, I don't suspect people, my colleagues will submit hearings in Veterans Affairs, but that leaves me with a lot of time. I would like to engage and chair some of these meetings. I just don't have the committee to do it, while other people have two important committees, such as, you know, Planning Development Transportation in COVID-19, or Public Safety and Education. But on the other hand, myself and Councilor Meheya have one committee with limited in scope, Councilor Murphy, too. So just wanted to highlight that. It's not a criticism of anybody, but it is a challenge to maybe engage myself, Councilor Meheya, and Councilor Murphy in this discussion, because we have something to offer. We have something to offer this body, and its hard work, and its integrity, and its also our ability to understand these issues. So count on us and engage us. We want to be part of the solution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. So just to respond, you know, I chaired one committee last during my term, and a number of us chaired one committee, and we're still able to really actively engage. I, in my committee, the Civil Rights Committee, I actually did a lot of filing so that I could engage in the work that I wanted to do, and was able to do housing work out of that committee. And so I do think that there are definitely ways to engage. There, Councilor Durkin stated that she would be fine. She actually was inviting Councilor Meheya in so that she could participate in this hearing, and so I think that is what is going to hopefully happen. There is no filing in the COVID-19 Committee as well, and so I think there is an opportunity here for us to really spend our time doing the work, and doing the work collaboratively, coming to the hearing if it's an issue that matters, and participating that way. Councilor Meheya, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I do appreciate my colleague advocating on my behalf, but I want to just rise on the record that, you know, this is my fourth year on this council, and I don't need permission to lead and to fight for the things that I care about. I don't need a committee to move my city forward. So I want to just name that, and I never asked permission, so I just want to be clear about that. But I do believe that what Councilor Flynn is trying to allude to is that there is a sentiment here that if you're not part of the cool kids club, or whatever the case is, is that you're not going to have the opportunity to really be in collaboration with your colleagues. And I would hope that as a body, we're going to demonstrate otherwise, and we're going to show up in ways that we are reflecting the city as a whole. And so if Councilor Durkin filed the hearing order in COVID-19, and I'm going to bring my big mouth to that hearing, then I will do just that, right? So it's not, it was me, the reason why I advocated for it to be in consideration for my committee, it was less about me not having, I'm a citywide council, I have a lot on my plate, and I have a lot of work to do, so it's less about me trying to have the mic, but it's more about kind of what the content matter is, and it's really about holding ourselves accountable and creating an opportunity for people to see what transparency and accountability looks like. And I will be more than happy to work with you in making that hearing feel just like that. So thank you to my council colleague for advocating on my behalf.
Thank you, Councilor Meheya. The chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez Anderson. Councilor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I will suggest that we move this conversation on. If there are sentiments or cool kids, there's no such thing. Look, you win some, you lose some, you were president, you know, you did what you did, you gave people committee, you negotiated. We know how it works. The politics here, for those of you watching at home, is that some people will negotiate to be president, and the vote happens. So you'll say, okay, what committee do you want? Or what office do you want? Or what parking spot? Or whatever. And that negotiation takes place, it's been happening for decades. We just got here. This black woman came in, and she talked to some people, some people didn't want to talk to her, some people did, and then she said, and she was very gracious about it. She was super kind about it. You know, like, if she made a mistake, I'm sorry, let's move on, can we talk? Can we do dinner? Can we do lunch? And so when you bring up, for the record, when you bring up this type of conversation, and you do this petty thing, where you get up, and you go back and forth with her, and you're petty with her, and you do this and forth, like, listen, cut it out, be an adult, take it outside, have a meeting, talk about it. We are elected, and there are people at home waiting for us to do our job. And so this petty conversation needs to be out of the chamber, not in this room, not in the chamber. You have an issue, there's some sentiment, there's some emotions, we are all good people here, fighting for our people. Cut it out. Let's get back to business. And stop coming for her, stop being petty. I'm going to call all of y'all out, and I told you before, you want smoke, I give you smoke. This is frustrating, I'm not being emotionally reactive, I'm saying it like it is. I'm calling it like it is. You have a petty conversation, take it out. And I'm going to take my time saying it, so it's nice and clear. Any one of you come for her, she's a black woman, she's president, all of a sudden there's all these issues with rules, blah, blah, blah. Listen, cut it out, get to business.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez Anderson. Councilor Durkin, I believe you were not in chambers when this happened. Councilor Flynn had said that he wanted an accounting for when this hearing is to happen, of all of how COVID money has been dispersed and how it hasn't been. I thought that that was in the order. I did not see that language in the order, so I want to correct the record that that language is not in the order. Wanted to just make sure that you know that that is a request, that we have a formal accounting of COVID funds, what's been dispersed, what hasn't been dispersed, and where there's room to go. Councilor Durkin, you have the floor.
Obviously, I know that a lot of people are interested in this issue, so I hope that I see you all at the hearing when I schedule it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Durkin. Thank you, Councilor Fernandez Anderson, and thank you to all my colleagues who have spoken on this matter. Thank you to all of those who are on this docket. This docket, docket number 04, oh, okay. Would anyone else like to add their name to this docket? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Meheya, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0473, will be referred to the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0474? Oh, we already did that, okay. We already, okay, yeah, okay. Out of order. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0474? And will you please take out of order docket number 0480 for the record?
Docket number 0474, Councilor Orell offered the following. Order for a hearing on the proposal for Christmas Addicts' Statue. And docket number 0480, Councilor Orell offered the following. Resolution recognizing March 5th as Christmas Addicts' Day in the City of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Orell.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Councilor Madam President as original co-sponsor, along with Councilor Flynn as an original co-sponsor.
Seeing no objections, I'm so added as second co-sponsor, and seeing no objections, Councilor Orell seeks suspension of the rules to add Councilor Flynn as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Councilor Flynn is so added on both dockets, on docket number 0474 and 0480. Councilor Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Many patriots gave their lives to win freedom and independence for this great land of ours. The very first to die for liberty was Christmas Addicts, an indigenous black man. Just a few hundred yards from here, on March 5th, 1770, Christmas Addicts led a band of colonists armed with only sticks, rocks, and snowballs against a patrol of redcoats. This was the first open rebellion against the Crown. The redcoats opened fire, and Addicts became the first man to give his life for our country. Born into slavery, Addicts had defied the odds, rising to prominence as an accomplished sailor and a staunch advocate for human rights. His tragic death during the Boston Massacre marked the beginning of a new era in the fight for independence. I'm proud to file a hearing order to explore the process with building a statue in Boston to honor Christmas Addicts. It is essential that we commemorate his legacy and contribution to our nation's history. Additionally, I filed a resolution to declare March 5th as Christmas Addicts' Day in Boston, recognizing the significance of this date in our country's history. I'm grateful for the support of organizations like Friends of Christmas Addicts Organization, who's here today, led by President Haroon Rashid, and the Office of Black Male Advancement. The tireless advocacy has been instrumental in bringing attention to Addict's story and ensuring that he received the recognition he deserves. And I will be looking to suspend and pass docket number 0480. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Orell. I'll speak briefly. Christmas Addicts holds a pivotal place in American history as the first martyr of the Boston Massacre, an event that significantly propelled our colonies towards independence from British rule. Addict's a man of African and Native American heritage, symbolizes our multifaceted struggle for liberty in the face of oppression. And so, Councilor Orell, I want to thank you for adding me. I want to thank Revolutionary Spaces, he was here earlier, for, yesterday they had a Christmas Addicts commemoration in front of the Old State House, and it was pretty powerful, and I was happy to be there. By commemorating Addicts, we celebrate not only a hero of the American Revolution, but also the enduring principles of equality and justice that defines the best of our character. And there are so many, I know, in our community who are working on this. Councilor Orell, you shouted out. President Haroon Rashid, thank you for being here. I know that we're going to be meeting soon. A meeting that has been moved several times, but I'm hoping, looking forward to meeting with you, together with Bill Wright, who holds a special place in my heart as a person who interviewed me for college when I was 17 years old, and really helped to show me the way. So, Bill, thank you always for being in this chamber, and for making sure that we are centering Black history and Black people who have a meaningful role in our city. Last week, Councilor Fernandez Anderson spoke extremely powerfully about the role of Harriet Tubman, who has a connection here to the city of Boston, and who has a statue. It's important for us to really commemorate via statues those who we want to honor. There's already a Harriet Tubman one, and I look forward to having one for Christmas Addicts. So thank you, Councilor Orell, again, for your leadership alongside community. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilor Orell, for adding me. We would celebrate Mr. Addicts and his sacrifice, really, for the birth of our nation, but we would also be celebrating and recognizing Black veterans as well, probably the first veteran killed in action for our country. We would celebrate him, we'd celebrate the incredible role of Black veterans and their service and sacrifice to our nation. I was with many of my colleagues recently for a Black Veterans Lunch, Brunch, rather, and we were listening to stories of Black veterans in our city, in our country, and the incredible role they have played. And I had the opportunity recently also to go up to the African-American Meeting House on Beacon Hill and Historical Museum for a symposium on the sacrifices of Black veterans, but I spoke about this last week, and going down to the Disabled American Veterans Conference this weekend, and one of the issues I do want to highlight down there is the incredible role Black veterans have made in our country, but they're not treated the same, and treated with the same level of respect and dignity as other veterans, and we can do a better job, especially at the VA medical facilities, in supporting them and their families when they return home after service to our country. Black veterans after World War II didn't enjoy the GI Bill that enabled many returning veterans the opportunity to buy a house through the GI Bill. We talk about generational wealth, that could have been an opportunity for veterans, Black veterans, to own a home across our country, but the VA chose not to include them for many reasons. But I'm honored to join Councilor Orell, recognizing Mr. Addicts and his incredible service to our country, in ensuring that going forward, that Black veterans, their voices are heard, their stories are heard, but also that we do everything possible to welcome them home and ensure that they get the same level of services and support as other veterans as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like, so we should go by docket. Councilor Meheya, you are looking to speak, or you want to add your name? You're looking to add your name, okay. So let's first go with docket 04.
She wants to speak.
You are looking to speak. The chair recognizes Councilor Meheya.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to thank my neighbor. You have been such a staunch advocate since day one around this issue, even before I became a city councilor. You have been pounding the pavement, and I am so happy to see this day come to fruition. And I also want to rise to also offer, again, my sincere condolences to the passing of your mom, and what an amazing way to pay tribute to her in this moment, with this, you know, passing, hopefully, and through this all. I just want to say thank you for your leadership. It has been amazing to watch you navigate this process. So congratulations.
Thank you, Councilor Meheya, and also want to offer your condolences on passing up, that's why, one of the reasons why our meeting hasn't been able to happen, sorry, my condolences. We will first move on docket number 0474. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Meheya, Pepe, Santana, Weber. This docket, docket number 0474, will be referred to the Committee, sorry, I have it here, yeah, will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. On dockets number 0480, Resolution recognizing March 5th as Christmas Addicts' Day in the City of Boston, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Meheya, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Councilor Orell, Councilor Orell, Louis Jean, and Flynn, seeks the suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0480. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, we are now on to docket number 0475. Oh, I apologize, Mr. Clerk. Councilor Orell, you have the floor.
Yes, I was hoping that we could take a brief minute to take a picture with Mr. Haroon and Mr. Bill Wright.
Yes, if all of my colleagues can gather and we can take a photo. Thank you, Councilor Orell. Thanks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0475?
Docket number 0475, Councilors Weber and Louis Jean offered the following. Order for a hearing regarding biannual review of the Boston Employment Committee
a hearing regarding biannual review of the Boston Employment Commission and Boston residents' jobs policy.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to suspend the rules and add Councilor Orell as an original third sponsor.
Counselor Weber moves to add Counselor Orell as an original, as an original third co-sponsor, seeing no objections. Counselor Orell is so added. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. And just before I speak, if I could add a fourth co-sponsor, I would be adding the vice chair on the Labor Committee, Julia Mejia, and I hope to have your passion and energy for workers' rights here, you know, help me, help us create a more equitable city. Pursuant to the Boston jobs and residency policy, we are required to hold a hearing twice a year on evaluating equity in hiring for Boston residents, women, and people of color on public development projects and large private projects. The Boston jobs and residency policy is an important piece of Boston's efforts to support its workforce. The ordinance was first implemented because of large disparities in employment opportunities in development projects across Boston. And as Chair of the Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development Committee, I am committed to ensuring that we are making progress. And I hope to, hope both I and my, the vice chair, Counselor Mejia, will be working on that. The Boston jobs and residency policy calls for, on private, on public development and on private development projects of over 50,000 square feet, that 51% of jobs go to Boston residents, 40% of jobs go to people of color, and 12% of jobs go to women. The information we have gathered in previous hearings has shown we continue to fall short of these goals. While we have made great progress in hiring people of color, we struggle in particular on hiring women and Boston residents. The Boston jobs and residency policy requires the administration to provide detailed compliance determinations, the number and amount of sanctions leveled for noncompliance, and the number of developers, general contractors, construction managers, and subcontractors determined to be out of compliance. This hearing is an opportunity for us as a council to support workers across Boston and advocate for increased enforcement. Last year, the administration shared that only 23% of tracked hours were worked by Boston residents, and that no trade with more than 1,000 hours worked met the 51% residency requirement. From last year's reports, 38% of the hours worked were by people of color, and only 7% of the hours worked were by women. The hearing also showed that the same is true of apprenticeships. We must do better. As my colleague, Counselor Flynn, highlighted at last year's meeting, there are little to no enforcement mechanisms available to the city to enforce these standards. Hopefully, this hearing will allow us to find new enforcement opportunities that are within the law. I believe strengthening the BJRPP can be one way to support our local workers, to support women workers, and to create more opportunities for people of color across Boston. I look forward to a productive conversation with the administration, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. I'll be brief. It's important that we have, it's required that we have these twice a year. We had really incredible data at the last hearing that the Office of Work Empowerment had been working on for quite some time, that really was revelatory about how much money we're losing in the city by noncompliance with the Boston residents' job policy. So, I look forward to this hearing, and I want to thank the administration, because I do think that they are really working, and several times, I think it's Counselor Fernand Anderson, Counselor Mejia have both proposed metrics and dashboards that we can use to really, you know, ensure compliance with BRJP. So, I'm looking forward to this, continuing this work. Counselor Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Weber, for bringing this hearing on order forward. In last, in our last hearing in October, my office was relentlessly in seeking specific data from the administration, especially from private developers on DEI metrics. We pushed for transparency and accountability, requesting data on DEI numbers for every single contractor involved in a city, as well as private projects that fall under the BRJP guidelines. While the administration has provided some information, there's still a need for clarity on the stats we requested. I think it would be useful to have a comprehensive database, giving us the ability to identify which subcontractors and contractors are hiring equitably, and allowing decision-makers to ensure contracts are awarded to those who share our goals of diverse, broad-based employment. To address wage disparities, I suggest categorizing income based on hourly salary or hours' work within specific categories. This approach would be helpful, will help us effectively tackle disparities in our workforce. Furthermore, I want to emphasize on the importance of compiling a list of subcontractors, subcontractors who are successfully meeting our outline goals. This information is invaluable for contractors, developers, and the city to meet our DEI objectives. Just want to just make sure that we continue to analyze this number to make sure that we're getting our diversity and exclusivity, exclusivity numbers on our city's workforce. So, looking forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Orell. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues. I'm going to assume best intentions regarding the passion comment, because I am very known to be spicy, so I really do appreciate you uplifting my passion. So, thank you for that. And I will say, it's not just passion, but I'm also producing a lot with that passion. Comes with sincere relentless ability to hold ourselves accountable, and I'm really looking forward to joining you in the hearing. And I think that I have seen every single, in the last four years, I keep asking the same questions, keep advocating for the same things, and I'm hoping, under your leadership, we'll get to see something different. And so, really looking forward to participating, and I'll just add that one of the things that I am, aside from the dashboard, I'm also looking to see what type of feedback, if any, is provided to folks who are unable to secure employment. I think that you don't know what you don't know, and I think that there's an opportunity there for us to be able to unpack that a little bit further. And I also am interested in working alongside community. There are a lot of folks out in these streets who have been doing this work, so I'd love to make sure that when we are hosting the hearing, that we're reaching out to some of the advocates, some of the fierce advocates, some of the ones that usually don't get invited to participate, to be here, to help us inform the work. So, looking forward to providing you some names of those folks, so that they can help with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank the maker, the makers for bringing this forward. It's an incredibly important discussion. I've had the opportunity to attend all of these hearings over the last six years, and what I enjoy most about these, or get most out of these hearings, is listening to the testimony of the public. Sometimes these hearings could be five hours or six hours, and it's well worth it to listen to the public and their concerns and challenges and recommendations. Sometimes the best recommendations we hear on a particular issue is from the public. So, looking forward to this. I also want to acknowledge City Councilor Bruce Bowling, City Councilor Chuck Turner, and Mayor Ray Flynn for their incredible work in bringing this issue forward to the to the public as well. And I'm looking forward to this discussion. One final point I would make is, I always advocated if a company intentionally goes out of its way to not provide the documentation that's legally required, or goes out of their way to not hire Boston residents, people of color, or women, those contractors should not be able to get city contracts, in my opinion. And just rewarding people in companies for lousy work and not complying or meeting, meeting the letter of the law or the spirit of the law should disqualify them from bidding on public contracts. Just a thought, maybe we can consider that as we discuss this topic as well. Again, thank you, thank you to the maker.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. I'd just like to say that, having done the hearings for the past years, I will say that one of the hardest metrics to meet, goals to meet, is the one of Boston residency. And I just want to tie that into the work that a lot of us are doing in other spaces in terms of affordable housing, because of how expensive it is to live here, in part the difficulties. But I think that there's a lot to glean from the hearings that we've had, and I look forward to this hearing. This docket, would anyone else like to add their name? Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernand Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Pepe, Santana. This docket, docket number 0...
47.
047. Okay, docket number 0475, will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0478.
Docket number 0478, Counselor Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Order for a hearing on provisions of temporary mental health treatment or interventions and preventions for children and youth before formal diagnosis.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernand Anderson. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'm trying to keep it brief. I wanted to touch on some points, basically file this to hold a hearing, to have a conversation, discuss early intervention and prevention, removing barriers to access, preventing misdiagnosis, promoting mental health well-being while collaborating with a collaborative approach. So, just generally, I, as a former mental health provider, I should do intensive care coordination. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's your, it's a CANS certified practitioner who actually would diagnose under a psychiatrist and then would actually connect people to the different levels of mental health services. And so, it's, it's, what's, what's hard about that is that a lot of the times, kids don't have enough time with their, with their actual therapist. So, when you connect them to either outpatient or in-home therapy, it could be school-based therapy or other types, and I'm trying to, sorry, I'm trying to speak fast. And basically, what happens is that folks will come in and spend about 10, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, I've seen it myself with a child and not really know that person. You have to do a comprehensive assessment, you have to do a CANS, and you have to then actually create a treatment plan, and based on 10, 20 minutes, a half hour, after knowing a child. And so, my concern is that there are a lot of services going into schools, connecting to mental health providers, and if you are quick in a hurry diagnosing kids, how many Black and Brown children will then be diagnosed, harshly diagnosed, overdiagnosed, misdiagnosed, with things that will go on their record, diagnoses that will go on their record permanently, sometimes a disorder, if you don't know, it's technically, according to DSM-5 or -6, is that it's a permanent thing, a permanent condition. So, you have to, forever in your life, you're saying that you struggle. For example, a teenager would be acting up, and it could be circumstantial, they just lost their home, they're homeless. So, then in comes the clinician, not saying, you know, it's circumstantial, and there are diagnoses for that, but in order for it to be, for you, for insurances to pay for the services, it has to be a medical necessity. And so, if you don't have a diagnosis, the kid doesn't get the services. So, what I'm suggesting is conversations about how the schools or other platforms are connecting children to services, and making sure that we are supportive, or maybe if it's not allocation, if we're finding ways to support mental health clinics, and for example, like Children Services of Roxbury, with services prior to the diagnosis, because sometimes those situations are circumstantial, and maybe the kid doesn't need a harsh diagnosis like oppositional defiance disorder, what teenager isn't, right? And so, suggesting that we talk about this, I needed to, I'm trying to rush, but I needed to make sure that I elaborate to emphasize the importance and the need for this conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Fernand Anderson. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Thank you. I know that this is an issue that you've talked about ever since last term, and that you care about deeply on behalf of our students. So, is anyone else looking to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, and please add the Chair. This docket, docket number...
047.
Yeah, docket number 0478 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0479. Okay. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0481.
Docket number 0481, Councilors Louis Jean and Durkin offer the following: Resolution recognizing March as Women's History Month.
Madam President, Counselor Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Women's History Month is celebrated in March every year to honor and recognize the contributions of women to events in history and contemporary society. This began in 1987 with the petition to Congress, and since 1987, the President has proclaimed March as Women's History Month, and is now annually dedicated to reflecting on the significant role, roles women, role women have played in shaping our nation and our world. We have so many local women here in the city of Boston who are part of our history, who continue to fight for women, everyone from Phyllis Wheatley to Louisa May Alcott, to Donna Summer, to Melia Cass, to Ruth Backson, to G. McGuire, women who have played an integral role, not only in gaining equality and working for women, for parity, whether it be in pay or in education, but who are trailblazers, and are the people on whose shoulders we stand. Congresswoman Presley continues to push for the Equal Rights Act to be passed for women, Equal Rights Amendment for women around the country, so that we can see parity when it comes to all of the issues that I just mentioned, when it comes to employment, when it comes to education. You know, we, I think, are still, I guess, a woman-majority body, but that has not come without, you know, people trying, you know, women running for office and not getting on, and women running for office and getting on. So, I want to thank all the women who preceded us, so that we can now be here during Women's History Month, claiming our space in politics. So, thank you so much. Oh, and I also would like to suspend the rules to add Counselor Coletta as an original co-sponsor, and I am seeking suspension and passage of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor President Louis Jean. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Council President Louis Jean, for including me on this one. The responsibility to uplift, celebrate, and acknowledge the contributions of women, women have made to our society historically in our modern world cannot be taken lightly. March is an ideal time to celebrate and thank many women whose shoulders we stand on, because they paved the way for me and so many of us to be accepted, respected, and valued in the government professions. This month is not merely an acknowledgement, it's an opportunity to educate and inspire. It's a chance to delve into the rich tapestry of women's history, learning about generations who have influenced our nation in ways seen and unseen. From suffragists fighting for their rights, to activists breaking down barriers in civil rights and beyond, women have been at the forefront of change, carving paths towards a fairer and more just society. We cannot discuss women's history without highlighting the pivotal role of women of color. From the abolitionist movement to the civil rights struggles and beyond, women of color have been trailblazers, driving movements for equality and justice forward. I'm inspired by the women in this very government space who have made history. City Council President Louis Jean, becoming the first Haitian-American city councilor and now city council president. Our very own Mayor Michelle Wu, who has led us fearlessly as the first Asian-American major, mayor of a major city in the U.S. And so many District 8 women who have done an incredible job, including my predecessor, Kenzie Bach. So, I know on election night, some people called me and said, "You've made history." And I said, "In what way?" I, a young woman, served in this role, and I'm another young woman serving in this role. And I think the more that we have women who serve in government, the less historic our place in this body should be. So, I want to highlight some District 8 historical achievements made by women. The Church of the Covenant, which is the women's lunch place, which Women's Lunch Place resides in at 64 Newbury Street, has supported women since they were given a right to vote in all church matters since 1885. Mariel Snowden, who we know has, is the namesake of Snowden International High School on 115 Newbury Street. In 1988, the Boston School Committee renamed Copley High School to honor her as a longtime African-American community activist with her husband Otto. They founded Freedom House in Roxbury, a nonprofit dedicated to human rights... a nonprofit dedicated to human rights and advocacy for, for people in Boston. And the Boston Women's Memorial, which I, is not, is no stranger to anyone who knows me, because I launched so many events from that space. And I'm hoping this year to help those statues get lit up in some way. So more to come on that. And there's so much, from Isabelle Stewart Gardner and obviously the folks who led in forming the Museum of African American History. Also want to acknowledge Mary Lys Mahoney of Wendell Phillips School on 65 Anderson Street, a block from my house. In 1879, became a graduate of the New England Hospital for Women. She was professionally trained, she was the first Black professionally-trained nurse in the U.S. and did that a block from my house. She attended the Phillips School and the first integrated school in Boston at 10 years old. And she lived her entire life as a civil rights activist. And this is just a little bit of all of the history of Boston. And I'm using all the energy I can muster to just say thank you to my colleagues for celebrating Women's History Month. We have a lot more work to do. And it's not lost on me that it's really hard for women to serve in government. And in my first seven months on the city council, I was surprised with the tenor in which people approached me, both in public and private, in our communities. We have a lot more work to do, because it's much easier to attack women in so many spaces. And as a woman who didn't think I was going to run for office and didn't think I was going to be in this space, you know, it, it takes a lot to muster everything you can to be in this space, to be public. And I thank the women of color who have stepped even forward more boldly in this body to serve here, because it is really difficult. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. Counselor President Louie Jean added Counselor Coletta as an original co-sponsor. Hearing no objection, Counselor Coletta is so added. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I am so excited to be added to this resolution. During National Women's History Month, we celebrate the courageous women who have helped our communities, our cities, and our nation build a fairer, more just society. I'm so incredible to serve with many wonderful women on this council and to have worked and supported powerful women breaking barriers, including Diane Monica, who was my predecessor. She was the first woman elected to District One. And Lydia Edwards, who was the first woman of color elected to represent District One. I actually started my career, I cut my teeth helping to elect women across the Commonwealth in the Massachusetts Women's Political Caucus. So I am just so excited to see so many women stepping up, not just in political roles or in roles having to do with elected officials, but in boardrooms and really getting to C-suite level positions. I think it's incredible and it's necessary, seeing that when we are at the table making these decisions, that our life perspective is brought. And it, it allows for better policies to be put in place. And so I'm really excited to see that. I'm excited to call out the Maverick Street Mothers in East Boston, whose shoulders I stand on as incredible advocates and leaders in our community to, you know, that really worked hard to prevent an international airport. And while it did happen, their resolve really set the tone and set the stage for future leadership in East Boston, in particular for women. And I just want to call out too, that as our rights are being taken away nationally, especially when it comes to the right to choose what you do with your own body and abortion rights, that we are unapologetic in our resolve to protect these rights at the city level and at the state level. And so I really appreciate our allies and those who identify as men and just really challenge everybody to stand up and let your voice be heard if this is something that you believe in. And I, I know that I will do so moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Brayden. I want to say thank you to the makers for bringing this important resolution before us. I also wanted to briefly discuss the incredible role women veterans have played as well. Counselor Coletta mentioned State Senator Lydia Edwards, who just volunteered to join the U.S. Army. And I highlight that, because women, women veterans are the fastest-growing group of veterans going to the VA Medical Centers. And VA centers are lacking critical medical facilities for them, including gender-specific medical care for women veterans. There's a lot more work we need to do, ensuring women veterans get the critical care and services that they have earned as well. And I enjoyed listening to some of the names my colleagues mentioned. And I just wanted to mention two, two friends of mine. Doris Ponte, who was the first BHA administrator, a woman of color, who was actually living in the public housing development. And my constituent in the South End, Joyce King, who's the wife of State Representative Mel King, someone who I've known for many years and respected and admired. So thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and please add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? I'll take just a second to shout out, shout out to the Brayden and Alston Historical Society. A few, many, it's probably 10, 12 years ago now, we did a Women's History Trail around this, around our neighborhood and documented and recorded the contributions that women had made over centuries into our neighborhoods. So that's something like, as we walk through our neighborhoods, there's many unsung heroines and sheros in our city that we need to just recognize. And, you know, it's international, it's Women's History Month, but like Black History Month, every month should be Women's History Month. So thank you. Counselor Worrell, you wanted to speak, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and I just want to say thank you to the makers. But also I want to highlight some of the great work that Ed Gaskin from the Grove Hall Main Street has done in collaboration with the Kraft Foundation, Rep World, and myself on the 200, 200 and I think 12, 15 Black women. That's up and down Blue Hill Live. And just his insight and that initiative just speaks to the importance that we as men see for our Black women and women in our community. Also want to just bring attention to, and shout out Anita Danker, who will lead a virtual tour on March 9th, showcasing the historical contributions of 18 women in Dorchester in collaboration with the Dorchester Historical Society and the Boston's Women Heritage Trail. So just want to say, you have an ally, and happy Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. Would anyone else, who would like to add their name? Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Pepe, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, Counselor Worrell, and please add my name. Counselor, Counselor President Louie Jean, Counselor Durkin, and Counselor Coletta seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1481. All those in favor? Oh, beg your pardon, 0481. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
And Counselor Worrell, if you could please share that information about that virtual event with our officer, with all of us. I think that would be great, so that folks know about it and have it, so they can put it on their calendars. Mr. Clerk, can we go back to docket number 0479?
Docket number 0479, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss projected commercial property tax values in Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Weber and Counselor Fernand J. Anderson as original co-sponsors.
Counselor Weber is so added. Counselor Worrell seeks suspension of the rules to add Counselor Fernand J. Anderson as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Fernand J. Anderson is so added. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you. For fiscal year 2024, commercial property taxes account for half of the revenue in our operating budget. The available space rate is 22% across both Class A and B and C offices. And the asking rents are down 10%. This isn't yet a revenue issue for Boston, and we are unlikely to face a fiscal cliff. But we need to understand the challenges we face and be prepared to address them adequately. Downtown is a different place than it is, than it was five years ago. What can we do to help it bounce back while protecting vital city programs? The city is working with developers on office-to-residential conversions, and that's a good first step. And we also see Counselor Flynn, who's proposing a Blue Ribbon Commission on today's agenda, is another piece of the puzzle. But it's time to start looking at actual stats on this office vacancy issue in Boston, seeing what, what the actual effects might be and what we can do to insulate ourselves against any significant budget impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to Counselor Worrell for introducing this hearing order. I believe this is a critical issue. You know, our city is increasingly reliant on commercial property taxes. And it is critical that we get an understanding of what we can expect in the coming years. I'm aware that, you know, as a body, we only recently acquired, you know, increased oversight and authority over the budget. And I believe that we must look beyond just this year to understand the long-term implications of this issue. A decrease in commercial property tax revenues threatens our schools, our streets, our public safety departments, and every city service. I believe that we must be proactive in addressing this and look forward to exploring, you know, all the opportunities to ensure that our city departments don't find themselves, you know, facing budget cuts. Thank you, and I look forward to working on this issue.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I have rise to thank the maker. This is a timely conversation that will influence and impact our upcoming budget negotiations. We can take the recent rise in property tax abatement requests, a 27% increase as the canary in the coal mine. It's quite simply staggering and sobering. The COVID-19 pandemic affected all of our lives, from the interpersonal core of our friends and family to all of our neighborhoods and city, city. Urban areas are still reeling from its impacts, and Boston's office evaluations are plummeting. Nearly three-quarters of our city's operating budget is funded by property taxes, which has implications on our city's fiscal buoyancy and the well-being of our residents. I understand the city has been proactive in addressing the potential decline of commercial property values with programs such as Office to Rental and a reserve fund to manage valid abatement requests. We need to understand that this is an issue not unique to Boston. All major cities are impacted at some level, and we should all be learning and strategizing from one another. Boston, however, is known for its innovation and its resilience and together in partnership with other cities. And together, we can fortify our standing as an economic hub. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Was anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Brayden, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Pepe, Santana. Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0479, will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Needs. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0482?
Docket number 0482, Counselors Fernandez Anderson and Louie Jean offer the following: Resolution to ensure that Boston Public Schools effectively address the needs of its Muslim students.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernand J. Anderson. Counselor Fernand J. Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Mahia as my third co-sponsor.
Counselor Fernand J. Anderson, suspension of the rules, add Counselor Mahia as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Mahia is so added. Oh, I just turned you off, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. Really quick, and promise this time it's going to be quick. I, for obvious reasons, last year, we filed a hearing order to discuss the needs of Muslim students in Boston Public Schools. We, I think the administration, the school, all agreed with us that there needed to be spaces where everyone could pray if they needed to take the time, that there were specific needs, like making wudhu, and I explained what that was, washing or ablution before prayer time, that there were specific nutritionist needs as well for halal foods and for kosher foods for our Jewish brothers and sisters as well. And here, it's so, up to now, this year, with the rise of Islamophobia as well as antisemitism, a lot of harassment calls and complaints to my office about protecting the rights of Muslim students against bullying and harassment. And so I would like to pass, suspend the rules and pass this resolution today and asking my colleagues to support this, to continue the conversation with BPS as budget is approaching, hopefully in the oversight of looking at what exactly or how we're handling it. I think this is, again, from the hearing, this is something that BPS supports. So just like to pass the resolution and go on record so that we can continue the conversation with them and continue to work on ensuring that we are providing resources or protecting our Muslim students. Thank you. Just sorry, just a shout out to Ikhna Relief, ISPCC, Maske Hamdullem, Mashel Quran, Maske Number 11 as well, all for supporting conversations. But most importantly, for the Muslim Justice League, who actually led the work and advocacy for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernand J. Anderson. Now, I'll be brief. I just want to thank you for your leadership and your partnership on this issue. This is why representation matters, so that our Muslim students feel like they are advocates who are making sure that they have safe space and that space, schools can be a welcoming space for them and the fullness of who they are. So thank you for bringing this forward. This is, we need to support all of our students, how they show up, their different faiths, and make them feel welcome. So thank you for your work here. Counselor Mahia, would you?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Anderson, for adding me as a third co-sponsor.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the maker for bringing this important issue forward. We had a conversation last, last week, in this week, I think, too, regarding swimming lessons for BPS kids as well. But I guess my point is, when we're fixing these swimming pools, let's also consider the ensuring that we have locker rooms that are, that take into consideration the Muslim community as well, ensuring that there is a designated space or location where they can change in a respectful manner. That issue is highlighted, something I certainly support. But as we provide swimming lessons, we should also factor in and listen to the Muslim community as we're renovating specific rooms, such as a locker room, and what impact it may or may not have on a particular person of the Muslim faith. So in terms of being inclusive, let's ensure that their voices are heard during this discussion as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Fernandez Anderson for filing this. I support it. And I think, as you mentioned about dietary restrictions, you know, I, I think this is a great issue to point out that, you know, in this very difficult time to find any common ground between Muslim and Jewish communities, a lot of Muslim, you know, sort of dietary rules and clothing rules are very similar to what Orthodox Jews live with in terms of covering, men and women cover their heads, and they eat kosher food. Orthodox Jews, whereas Muslims eat halal food. And it's someplace where we can kind of work together to, to make people feel accepted in the community. And I do believe, and my office was told, that BPS is working on providing halal and kosher foods. It's not available yet, but supposedly by the end of this month or very soon, that they will be doing that. And so I, I support this resolution. I'll be, you know, voting for it. And I'd just like to commend, you know, the mayor's administration for working on the dietary issue at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Brayden, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Weber, Worrell. Counsel Fernando Anderson, Louie Jean, and Mahia seek the suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0482. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0483?
Docket number 0483, Counselors Fernandez Anderson and Worrell offer the following: Resolution to establish a digital marketplace pilot program.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson. Counsel Fernando Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. This is exciting for me. Last year, we had, we held a hearing, and I filed a hearing order to establish a digital marketplace for small businesses in Boston, essentially creating e-commerce or Amazon for small businesses. This could be, look as simple as getting BeLocal, the already established app, to revamp itself and contracting a tech company to actually be able to create the digital platform. I also think that this app, the new and reform BeLocal or evolved BeLocal in the future, not only e-commerce, but it could be a partnership between the city and Main Streets to create the back office or the online virtual back office for tech assistance. Imagine that you are a business owner and that you have, you can do business in a digital marketplace virtually, and that you had the back office of your Main Streets to actually support you. Say in your language that you could schedule an appointment online and get assistance with itemization, inventory, or maybe you're just branding, or maybe filing your taxes. This is super crucial for our small businesses, and I'd like to thank Chief Idou, who has been super supportive with this. I'd like to thank our mayor, who's dedicated, who's dedicated or allocated funds to doing this and improving BeLocal. So looking forward to continuing to work with Chief Idou and my co-sponsor, Counselor Worrell, in working on this. This is exciting. Imagine an Amazon for free, a platform, a digital marketplace for small businesses in Boston, so that they can compete with the best of them. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Looking forward to also asking you to suspend and pass, again, this is something that I filed a hearing and refiling, I figured that we've already had this conversation, the administration is supportive, why not suspend and pass today to support this? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Fernando Anderson. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Peppin, Weber. Please add the Chair. Counsel Fernando Anderson and Worrell, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0483. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on docket number 0483. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Peppin.
Yes.
Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 0483 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0483 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0484?
Docket number 0484, Counselors Fernandez Anderson and Louie Jean offer the following: Resolution recognizing the independence of the West African nation of Ghana and their liberation from British colonialism on March 6, 1957.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson. Counsel Fernando Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. This one, I will not rush because it's super special to me, and I just wanted to share with you guys a little bit about the amazing history of Ghana. On March 6, as you guys know that I am the first African immigrant elected to the City Council, so this is special whenever I highlight my home continent of Africa. On March 6, 1957, under the leadership of esteemed Pan-Africanist leader Kwame Nkrumah, Ghana became the first nation within Sub-Saharan Africa to achieve political independence, and said independence has an inspiration to various other leaders and movements throughout the African diaspora and lovers of freedom everywhere, including such legendary 20th century African leaders as Patrice Lumumba of Congo and Emileka Cabral of Guinea-Bissau and Cabo Verde. The city of Boston recognizes the rich and storied history of Ghana and a nation that predates colonization with a historic rooted in ancient kingdoms such as Kingdom of Dagbong and Ashanti Empire, contributing significantly to Africa's cultural and historical tapestry. I will stop there to say to you, today I brought you Jollof, and to my Nigerian brothers and sisters, don't fight me, Ghana's Jollof is amazing, and I actually have an entire tray for all of us. Hopefully, you're really hungry to enjoy Jollof today in the Curly Room. So everyone is invited, those of you in the seats as well, the audience. I wanted to shout out my Director of Constituent Service, Erasi Yanka, who is tremendous, who's been doing amazing work with our constituents in D7, as well as Priscilla Tagore, who is my Director of All Marketing and Social Media. So thank you so much, and I know that we've already raised a flag today, so thank you and Happy Independence Day to Ghana. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernando Anderson. I'll be brief. Counsel Fernando Anderson has brought what is known as the Jollof Wars into chambers, where the Nigerian community and the Ghanaian community fight over who has the best Jollof rice. I am impartial, but I am looking forward to eating Ghanaian Jollof rice. I, Ghana represents so much to so many, especially to Ghanaians, to the African diaspora, again, as Counsel Fernando Anderson said, with folks like Kwame Nkrumah, the leading Pan-Africans, the revolutionary, who allowed Ghana to be independent from British colonial rule. Think about other countries in the African continent probably would not have been able to chart the road towards independence if Ghana wasn't the first in what is known as Sub-Saharan West Africa to be able to gain their independence. So I started this morning texting my Ghanaian friends Happy Independence Day to the Black Stars because of the importance of, their soccer team is known as the Black Stars, but there's also a Black Star in the middle of their flag, and so they call themselves the Black Stars. We celebrate the domino spirit of Ghana and its people in honor of the significant contributions of Ghanaians worldwide and what it teaches all of us. So thank you, Counsel Fernando Anderson, for having me. I want to thank, we raised a flag today in somewhat impromptu manner here at City Hall. I want to thank all of my colleagues who were able to join in that impromptu fashion, and so thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counsel Fernando Anderson?
President, thank you. I am seeking to suspend the rules and pass of this resolution today.
Thank you, thank you. And I also wanted to shout out, we had with us City Council Pious Ali from Portland, who was with us, mayor pro temp, but also a Ghanaian, American elected official. We have the President of the Ghana Association of Greater Boston, Sehdu Simani, the Vice President Evelyn Issa, Executive Director Yvonne Afori, and Tanya, Counsel Fernando Anderson's own staff who's Ghanaian, who she uplifted, so I want to thank all of them for making the flag where it may be possible, along with Reggie Colomond. Counsel Fernando Anderson, seek suspension of the rules, and Counsel Fernando Anderson and Louie Jean, seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 04... Oh, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, and please, oh, we're done. Okay, please add them. Counsel Fernando Anderson and Counsel Louie Jean, seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0484. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Down the vote.
Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on docket number 0484. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Peppin.
Yes.
Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 0484 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket, docket number 0484, has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please?
It's 11 votes.
11, oh, 11 votes in the affirmative. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket number 0484 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0485?
Docket number 0485, Counsel Flynn offer the following: Resolution in support of establishing a Blue Ribbon Commission to study strategies in filling downtown office vacancies.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we know, approximately three-quarters of the city of Boston budget is derived from property taxes. When we talk about our heavy reliance on property taxes, we must also note that a large part of that comes from commercial in office buildings, which in the current fiscal year is accessed at $63 billion. Both during and now, following the pandemic, we have seen offices and storefronts become vacant due to remote and work-from-home policies and lack of foot traffic. In fact, recent research from brokerage firm Newmark, the office vacancy rate now is about 20% in downtown, which is up from 40% from last year. I'm also proud to represent most of downtown Boston, a portion of downtown, and the Financial District as well. This is an extremely serious issue for Boston. Vacancy rates impact the value of real estate, which in turn also impact the amount of tax revenue that we generate to fund our budget, to pay for our bills. As you also know, Boston Policy Institute at Tufts University, they had researched recently, and they had found, due to the decreasing value of office space, there is a potential shortfall of $1.2 to $1.5 billion in city revenue over the next five years. The report highlighted that an environment of remote work and high interest rates have created an economic act of God, which made commercial buildings less valuable, which in turn will impact the city's tax base. We also know that the commercial buildings are putting in abatement requests. So far, 322 abatement requests submitted by February 1, up from 253 last year. I appreciate Commissioner Aronello's comments, who I have great respect for, that the city has not seen any indicators from real estate markets that would lead to a revenue shortfall, and that they are monitoring the situation closely. However, with these reports of alarming budget shortfalls on the horizon, we also cannot afford to wait and see before reacting to a fiscal crisis. Oftentimes, government waits to react to a crisis in hopes that the music will never stop, but it's critical we take proactive steps now in order to be prepared for any and all issues regarding potential revenue. I know that Counsel Worrell also filed a hearing order today about property tax values, and I know that discussion will be very informative and helpful to city departments as we discuss the city budget very shortly. I've been trying to discuss this issue, sounded me loud, for some time after talking with downtown, small businesses, business leaders as well. Last year, I sponsored, and the City Council eventually held a hearing on bringing back foot traffic by having in-person meetings. With the hybrid option for public accessibility for all city boards and commissions as a way to both set an example and encourage all sectors to work with their employees to begin to shift to more in-person workdays, since small businesses, restaurants, retailers, they need to be supported by visitors to downtown and the Financial District, and for it to have sustained prosperity. I understand that traffic, congestion, transportation continue to be an issue for those considering coming back to work in person, and that was brought up at my last hearing. But I would also like to remind us that these issues preceded these serious concerns on downtown property values, our commercial tax base, and foot traffic. Another hearing I held in 2019 before the pandemic, we discussed reports of Boston being rated worst in the country for traffic at that time. It also highlighted 115,000 rideshare trips per day in Boston, with 60% of cars being added to our region pre-pandemic. We certainly need to address traffic and transportation, but we can't afford to let that prevent the broader conversation about the long-term stability of our downtown and Financial District, and how we should fill office vacancies when we are staring at a potential billion-dollar shortfall. It's critical that we act now to protect our commercial tax base and budget. As a starting point, I believe it's appropriate to establish a Blue Ribbon Commission made up of businesses, business leaders, city and state officials, neighborhood activists, and other relevant experts to study the impact of the office vacancies and make recommendations to fill these vacancies and ensure the long-term stability of our city, state, regional economy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Counsel Flynn, for your work on this. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Counsel Fernando Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to quickly thank my counsel colleague, Counsel Flynn. I think he raises very crucial points here and looking forward to supporting it and the conversation, to add my name to it in the conversation in the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll add your name. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. My office met this morning with community leaders in our downtown neighborhood, so I know firsthand from these conversations that these are issues on the minds of our downtown community right now. I fully agree that the future of downtown Boston is essential to Boston's success, and a large part of that is how downtown can continue to adapt to changes in how and where we work. My thanks to Counsel Flynn for offering this resolution and for bringing more attention to these important issues. Also, like he echoed, I also want to share my thanks to Counsel Worrell for offering a hearing order earlier today to discuss commercial property tax values. It's very clear to me that as a council, we're thinking about how commercial property values and office vacancies will impact Boston's future, and I look forward to working with my council colleagues to continue tackling these issues. Excuse me. I agree with this resolution statement that we need to work together more as a council to address office vacancies in the city of Boston, particularly right here in downtown. I also support the idea that we would assemble a group of experts to help work on this critical issue. Madam President, I do have a couple of clarified questions, which I'd like to respectfully ask through you, through the Chair, to the Maker.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Since this is a non-binding resolution, I'd like to understand better how the Maker envisions the commission coming together, if it would be something that the council assembles and oversees, or if it's something, or if we're calling on the administration to create a commission. And I'd like to understand if the council would be better, will be part of identifying the commission members, as well as how the commission will report back findings and recommendations to the council, and what sort of format that might be in. Again, my thanks to Counsel Flynn for bringing this forward, and I look forward for the details on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. Counsel Flynn, would you like to address the questions that are directed towards you? Counsel Flynn, you now have the floor, and then I will go to Counsel Coletta. My apologies.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counsel Santana for those important questions that you asked. I would envision that this Blue Ribbon Commission would be coordinated by the Mayor's Office with the support of the Boston City Council, supported by the residents of the city, hopefully, but also active involvement and engagement from the business community, labor officials, real estate executives, neighborhoods, the voices of the media, workers, small business owners. Small business owners have said to me that with workers... Small business owners have said to me that with, with workers still working three days a week in the downtown Boston area, the financial area, many of these small businesses, such as a restaurant or a pub, are not able to sustain the bills that are coming in. They need to be open five days a week consistently, but because the foot traffic is not there in many of these locations throughout the downtown area, it's very difficult for them to pay their bills, so that's, that's one of the reasons I, I want to go forward with this. And you are correct, this is non-binding. It, it shows, but what it shows is that the Boston City Council is taking this issue seriously. We value the critical input from the business community, from workers, from transportation officials, from residents, and that having a downtown and Financial District, having that success, be successful, only helps the city of Boston. A lot of our tax dollars, our revenue coming into the city is from that particular area as well, paying for our schools, paying for our city employees, paying for working to help our seniors and persons with disabilities, for cleaning our streets and sidewalks, so it's critical that we support the downtown Financial District and ensure that business leaders are also part of the solution, listening to their concerns, listening to them on how we can improve our economy, how we can improve getting people back to work consistently. Thank you, Counselor Santana, for those informative questions.
Okay, thank you. But the Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
You have the floor, sorry. I apologize. I appreciate Counselor Santana's question, and I want to thank the Maker and let him know that I really value his partnership as a downtown representative. I'm taking notes, seeing that I'm a newly minted downtown representative here on the council. And I just wanted to call out the fact that in 2010, Mayor Menino challenged the city, all industries, both public and private, to come together to solve the existential crisis of climate change. And that led to the creation of the Green Ribbon Commission, which would otherwise be known as the Blue Ribbon Commission, but for obvious reasons, it's named green. It is a separate entity, and I don't have the enabling legislation, if we need enabling legislation, but you look at the board, and it is just a consortium of heavy hitters within the industry, and I think we could take a lot of what they've done already to build this framework. I think that it is necessary, and I support this. So I just wanted to call that out and really look forward to actually building this and working in partnership with the mayor and industry leaders to get these conversations up off the ground in the hopes of fostering economic vibrancy here in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez-Anderson, Fitzgerald, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. Counselor Flynn, see suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0485. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Roll, roll call vote on docket number 0485. Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Loujain. Counselor Loujain, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, yes. Counselor Mejia. Yes. Counselor Mejia, yes. Document number 0485 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0485 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0486?
Document number 0486, Counselors Fernandez-Anderson and Loujain offered the following: "Resolution to extend heartfelt wishes to the Muslim community during Ramadan."
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, it's the month where you guys will see me yawning and not in the best of moods, but I'll just be very quiet in my little corner, because I'll be trying very hard not to talk about any smoke. And I'm sorry, earlier I said that. You guys know I'm sweet, but still, yeah, you know what I mean. But it will be the month where I'll be very disciplined and trying my very best to correct my stuff, and it's the month where the Muslims take to observe and reflect, to do some introspective work on where your character is, your behaviors, self-correcting and self-disciplining in terms of behavior, and, and of course, your internal conflicts. And so every year, I'll be looking forward to doing this, because it's one of the pillars of Islam. As you know, shahada being one, so profession to faith, believing, and Ramadan fasting for a month is one, as well as Hajj is another. And I don't want to belabor today, because I know that we are looking to Jelaf, but Ramadan is especially important to our city, understanding, cultural understanding and inclusivity. I'm very excited to extend my heartfelt wishes to the Muslim community during the month of Ramadan. Every time Ramadan comes upon us, Muslims are actually extremely happy. Finally, we get to be forgiven. We get to reflect on all of the things that we are, you know, we'll start acting right, so I wanted to shout out my dear, sweet, younger sister, Hodan, your staff, Counselor President, and of course, Sister Asha, my other younger sister here, and there's in Department of Moya, Brother Yusefie, Brother Mohammed, this, the list goes on and on and on in the city of Boston, but throughout Boston, Massachusetts, the world, I wish you blessed Ramadan. May Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, accept our fast and our good deeds and forgive us of our bad ones, and may everyone have Ramadan Mubarak. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. I want to say thank you for allowing me to be honest with you, and want to look forward to saying Ramadan Mubarak to our Muslim community. Yes, including my wonderful staffer, Hodan Hashi, the photographer with the mostest, among other things. But really, just want to extend a warm congratulations for what I hope is an easy fast, but I know is really difficult, but also really meaningful and introspective, so. An early Ramadan Mubarak to all. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson and Counselor Loujain see suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0486. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on docket number 0486. Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Loujain. Counselor Loujain, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, yes. Document number 0486 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0486 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 048, 0487?
Document number 0487, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson offered the following: "Resolution to improve bus monitor pay rates and working conditions in the city of Boston."
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, oh. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to add my name to 0482, 0483, and 0484, and also let the record reflect that I voted yes on each of those three docket.
Mr. Clerk, is that, you, do you have that for the record?
0482, 0483, and 0484.
Okay, thank you. My apologies. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This resolution, sorry. Before I do that, Madam President, can we suspend the rules and add Counselor Mejia as my second co-sponsor and Counselor Peppin as my third co-sponsor?
Counselor Mejia is added as your second co-sponsor. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson seeks suspension of the rules and adding Counselor Peppin as a third original co-sponsor, seeing no objections. Counselor Peppin is so added. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This resolution is crucial, because it seeks to improve the pay rates for bus monitors, ensuring that they receive fair compensation for their work. Fair wages are essential for ensuring economic security and dignity for all workers, including bus monitors. I also recognize that improving working conditions for bus monitors demonstrates a commitment to upholding workers' rights and advocating for fair labor practices. As a representative of my district, I care about this resolution, because it aligns with their values of equity, fairness, and social justice. So I'm also asking for, to suspend the rules in passage of this resolution today. I'd like to point out Mr. Nice, bus monitor for my children throughout their education for over 25 years. This woman ended up being diagnosed with breast cancer and had to go through a whole lot of treatment and years of struggle, and finally beat it and then further struggled, so we love you, Mr. Nice, and thank you to all the bus monitors everywhere in the world. It's not easy, guys. As a parent, if you try to jump on the bus, it's, first of all, I get carsick if I'm not driving. It's horrible, and these kids are so bad sometimes. So it's just a lot of work. And so anyway, scratch that part, but anyway, sometimes, you know, kids are acting up, and it's hard work, and these bus monitors have to get up at four, five in the morning, right? They have to be in the bus in the first stop from the beginning, so hard work. And then they have to be CPA certified, so saving our kids' lives at times, right? And going through all of that, and sometimes even assaulted by some of the kids, so we should respect them and honor them, and they definitely deserve higher pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor. Oh, I didn't see your light on. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Just so I know, when you're a co-sponsor, do you automatically speak, or you have to?
Well.
So I, so I forget.
No, traditionally, I have been, but it's like, in this meeting, there have been some second co-sponsors who have not wanted to speak, I imagine, for.
I wasn't sure. I just want to make sure that I don't violate rules. So, thank you, Counselor Anderson, for adding me as a second co-sponsor. You know, my office has been working in deep partnership with the bus monitors for some time now, not just as the education chair previously, but also in the workforce development. And so I'm really happy to see this resolution here on the floor today. You know, I talk about the fact that my mom is 75 years old now and still too poor to retire. She's been working at the same college in, as a low-wage worker, as a food handler now for 25 years, and she's now only making $22 an hour. And so when we're thinking about these issues, and when we're thinking about fairness and how we treat folks, I think that it's important to recognize that our bus monitors are literally living paycheck to paycheck and oftentimes have to take on additional work just so that they can stay here in the city of Boston. And I also think that aside from just the pay, it's also their treatment, and I think that sometimes, you know, good intentions don't have the best impact. They don't feel represented by some of the unions. They don't feel heard. They feel disrespected and undervalued, and I think that this resolution is an affirmation of who they are and the value that we have for them. But I also think there is an opportunity here, and I'm looking forward to potentially, you know, working alongside Counselor Anderson to dig a little bit deeper and figure out how we can really put some pen to paper and do something around policy that will help improve the quality of life for them. And as I continue to navigate the world of politics, I'm always really mindful of, you know, how, how I lend my voice to things, and I recognize that my silence and my voice really matters. So when I don't say something, it says a lot, and when I do say something, it says just as equally as much. And so picking and choosing the things that I am going to go hard for, and these are one of, this is one of the things that I definitely think is worth my, my mouthpiece. So happy to join you on this and looking forward to doing the work.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Anderson, thank you for submitting this resolution. It's, it's very important to make sure that these workers are paid correctly. Those bus monitors are the eyes and ears of parents, of the bus drivers, of the kids. They're the ones making sure that everyone's safe on the bus. I used to ride a school bus, and the monitors were the ones that made sure I had my seatbelt on or made sure that I didn't forget my bookbag on the bus. So I stand with you to make sure that the bus monitors get paid correctly, and I'm glad to just partner with you on this.
Thank you, Counselor Peppin. The Chair recognizes Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and, and thank you to Counselor Fernandez-Anderson and the co-sponsors for, for bringing this. I, I just had a question for Madam President. If we pass this resolution, can we have a a hearing later on on the same issue?
So, okay, I will, I, I will, under the rules, there is, it may be, that may be difficult to also have a hearing on that, but we, my office is working, has been working on increasing the wages of all those paid workers, and this could be part of that conversation, even if a resolution is filed. But I'll also allow Counselor Fernandez-Anderson to respond to that question.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Weber, I'm happy, took it right out of my mouth. Happy to send it to a hearing as a filed, as I filed it as a resolution. You can also hold a hearing, even if it's not stipulated, so I'm happy to hold a hearing. I think that a conversation would be worthwhile.
Yeah, yeah, and thank you, just, you know, I think we should highlight workers who are paid essentially the minimum wage here in Boston, and how hard it is to make ends meet, and certainly the bus monitors are part of that. We have a living wage ordinance that uses a model that I don't think is sufficient for, for paying minimum wage to city workers, and I'd certainly like to hear from more workers across the city about the challenges they face while working hard but getting paid the minimum amount that, that we've set. And so, you know, talked, I'm happy to work with you, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, to identify those workers, certainly, I think, the bus monitors would be part of that, and we definitely have to support them, I think, just to, to identify what, what life is like for our city workers who are, who are earning the lowest wages would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, thank you. Just to clarify, so Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you will not be seeking suspension of the rules, and you will be okay with this going to committee?
Yes, Madam, and, yeah, working with Chair Weber in his committee would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the Maker for this important hearing order. I also, please add my name to this. I also would like to talk about, even briefly, or have a conversation about it in the hearing, I should say, is with their low salary, with their low pay, what housing opportunities are there available for these workers? Whether it's any apartment assistance, whether it's home ownership, but what is the city specifically doing to help low-wage workers, city employees, so that they were able to live in Boston, raise their family in Boston, and many of them, as we know, are part of the residency, where they have to work a period period of time, five years or 10 years, in the city. So since it is going into a committee, I'd like to see if we're able to include any type of housing support for the lowest-wage workers that are city employees. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone? Oh, the chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And a year or so ago, our office filed a hearing order around workforce development housing, and I think that is a really good marriage and presents an opportunity for us to look at our workers as a whole, not just in little compliments, I guess, if you will. So I think that there is an opportunity for us to look at a joint hearing or some sort of discussion that really looks at the housing crisis and also the wage crisis for the city residents. So looking forward to maybe filing something that we can do collaboratively so that we're not, that we're utilizing our time most effectively. So while I've been pausing on my policy, because I want to be super mindful of how I utilize my time, I think that is a policy that I'm willing to file sooner rather than later so that we can have it in conjunction.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. And I was just thinking about the work that you did via ARPA to support our residents, our city workers who have housing emergencies. And it's also like, I should get quick, file quickly that hearing order on our lowest-wage workers. We have the administration do research on our lowest-paid workers, and we should just have these hearings together. So thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, for your leadership, and to my colleagues, Counsel Weber, for your recommendation and our ability to work together on this issue that we all care deeply about. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Brayden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. Docket number 0487 will be sent to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0488.
Docket number 0488, Councilors Brayden and Louie Jean offer the following: Resolution calling for further measures to supplement inclusionary zoning and advance affordable housing in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Brayden. Counselor Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Mejia as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you, Counselor Brayden, for the suspension of the rules. To add Counselor Mejia as original co-sponsor, original third co-sponsor, seeing here are no objections. Counselor Mejia is so added. Counselor Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you. I offer this resolution with Counselor Louie Jean and Counselor Mejia, asking the council to call for further steps to advance affordable housing through the inclusionary zoning. For those who may be unfamiliar, the Inclusionary Development Policy, IDP, was created by Mayor O' executive order in 2000 to require market rate developments of 10 or more units and requiring zoning relief to develop a portion of those units as income-restricted housing or contribute funds to off-site affordable housing. The IDP was last updated by executive order by Mayor Walsh in 2015. In 2019, the City Council passed a home rule petition to enable the city of Boston to establish inclusionary housing requirements in the zoning code, and the home rule petition was enacted and signed into law in January of 2021. Throughout 2022, the Mayor's Office of Housing procured the services of a consultant to conduct a study of Boston's housing conditions and real estate market trends to inform the feasibility of increasing inclusionary development policy requirements. In February of 2023, a report with recommendations was published, and public hearings were held throughout the spring of 2023. In July of 2023, the BPDA Board approved a tax amendment to codify inclusionary development into the zoning code, and it was accepted by the City Council in September of 23. It was then approved by the City Zoning Commission in November of 2023 and takes effect in October of this year, 2024. The new inclusionary zoning requirements will lower the threshold for developments required to include affordable housing from 10 units to seven, and increase from 13% of units to 17% of units or project square footage. Large rental projects in particular will have the option to provide a total of 18% of units or project square footage, 15% at an average of 50% of the area median income, plus 3% voucher set aside, or to provide a total of 20% of units or project square footage, 17% at an average of 60% of the AMI, plus 3% voucher set aside. The city of Boston voucher program makes income-restricted housing affordable to low-income renters by ensuring tenants can pay no more than 30% of their income and at no cost to developers or impacts to project feasibility. This makes deeper affordability possible for more Boston residents, and it seems timely that we're just talking about how difficult it is for low-income residents in Boston to afford to stay here. So this is a very important policy in terms of affordability across our city. This resolution expresses the City Council's intention to build on the new inclusionary zoning requirements by encouraging developers to pursue the voucher program to deepen affordability for residents at lower AMI levels and to seek periodic review of future adjustments to the affordability levels beyond 20%, beginning no later than 2026, after studying housing affordability, demand, and costs to inform feasibility. To give colleagues time to review the resolution prior to passage, I request that the chair defer docket 0488 to committee, and it will be called for passage at a later date. I also want to thank my co-sponsor, Madam President, Counselor Louie Jean and Counselor Mejia, for their partnership on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brayden. I'll be brief. I thank you for your work and collaboration, my office, on this. And it's just basically the last two paragraphs are the crux that, you know, their potentially advantages to deepening affordability with the further use of city of Boston housing vouchers and that we will do our duty, which we probably would have done anyways, of reviewing the inclusionary rates that we have now codified into zoning in 2026 after we've collected sufficient data and thinking about what advantages there are to making changes to IDP as part of the inclusionary zoning, to entrench those changes within zoning themselves for predictability, to also help with something that we see happening a lot, which is land speculation. And so making sure that the affordability requirements are already tied into land speculation, to sort of tamp down on land speculation, I think, is important. But thank you, Counselor Brayden, for your work, and we will continue to work and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to review this resolution. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Brayden, for adding me as a third co-sponsor. Really grateful for the opportunity to join you. I think that, I guess, the best way for me to just be is just be myself, right? So permission to do so. I think what happens is that oftentimes when we're talking about policy and we're talking about kind of impact, a lot of things just get lost in big words. And so for those folks who are following along, it's just really important to just kind of make it as simple as possible. With an example of something that I just currently went through with a constituent who literally had to reduce the amount of income that she was getting so that she can afford and qualify for an opportunity to get into an affordable unit. And so the decisions that people are having to make every single day are the things that we're talking about here right now in this moment. And when we're talking about what we can do here on the City Council, it really requires us to recognize that this work, it's not just the council, but we're going to need advocates. We're going to need folks who are out in these streets to show up when we're hosting a public hearing around these issues and to amplify. And when we talk about affordable housing, there's something else that I've learned along the way, is that when we think about affordable housing, there are a lot of black and brown folks that believe that more affordable housing is going to, is a bad thing. And so it makes it really difficult for developers to want to do that. I'll give you another example. I learned this through Alex E. Edwards, who is the owner of Thumbprint Realty, and he had educated me when I was on the campaign trail about how difficult it is when we're talking about gentrification and when we're talking about affordable housing, that there seems to be a tension with that. And I think there's an opportunity for us to learn how we build affordable without displacing people of color. And so I think that there's an opportunity within this conversation to look at that. And I'd love to invite him to be, when we have a hearing, to, you know, have him participate so that I'm sure we can all learn from him as well. But anyways, all this to say is that I think, you know, I pushed for 50% IDP, which everybody thought I was crazy. And I think now we're landing at 33%. I think 20% is respectable, but I just don't think that we're still meeting the mark as it relates to what the moment is calling for. So looking forward to working alongside the Chair of Housing to figure out how we can utilize our platform to move the needle. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the makers. Having grown up in Boston public housing, in Alice Tater, BHA, Mission Hill, I know how transformative investing in our community's housing is. It's shaped my life and the lives of my whole family. Safe, accessible, and affordable housing is the most important issue for everyone in our community. It's hard to build, and any, and build any other part of your life without a stable home. That's why I believe housing is a human right. Everyone deserves a home. Our affordable housing investments are an important part of making homes accessible for everyone in Boston. They offer opportunities for some of our lower-income families and residents to have a home that they can afford. No single housing policy will solve our housing crisis, but inclusionary zoning is certainly an important part of the equation. Since we have a lot on the agenda today, you know, I won't spend time echoing a lot of what my colleagues are saying, but I did want to rise to particularly highlight this resolution's call for the council to periodically review data on housing affordability, demand, and construction costs in evaluating our inclusionary zoning requirements. I look forward to working with my colleagues to create a process of review. My thanks, my many thanks to Counselor Brayden, Counselor President Louie Jean, and Counselor Mejia for offering this resolution. I look forward to joining this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone? Oh, the chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just looking at this, and I want to make sure I'm reading it right. We're looking at, for in the future, to increase it beyond 20% of the IDP affordability, right? We'll use that using data that we currently get from now until then, et cetera. So we wouldn't actually go for this until 2026, correct?
So, yeah, so this, well, Counselor Brayden, this addressed the question to me, so I will answer the question. So this resolution asks us to, no later than 2026, to review the IDP set-asides. And it says, "Using data on housing affordability, demand, and construction costs to inform feasible and effective timelines to phase in future increases beyond 20% of affordability."
No, I understand, and nothing, affordable housing absolutely needs to occur and address it. So I don't want to, I don't want to be up here thinking that that is not, that my intent is to stifle that. But I just do want to, I was kind of thinking about everything that's on the docket today, and we've got stuff from, you know, increasing the bus monitors' pay, other things we want to do, other issues we need to advance. But in the same docket, we've got our commercial property tax falling and worried about stifling growth, which, you know, increasing IDP could stifle development as well. And I know we talk about new growth being part of our budget, a significant portion of our budget. So with falling the tax assessments on downtown buildings and potentially having developers be less inclined to create more housing, but with all the things we're talking about rising, I just sort of caution against overall the, sort of the dichotomy of the things that are on this agenda. We need to pay people more and do this, but we also have to, but we have to realize that there are tough times coming and that there's potential cuts to the budget, and we're going to make some hard decisions in the future. So I'm just looking at this all of understanding what is the best way we can move forward to make sure affordable housing is available. But as I've always, as I've learned over my time here as well, is that I'd rather take 1% of a million than 0% of 100, right? And so I think that's sort of what I'm looking at here. But needless to say, I just wanted to clarify, but also make that sort of known, that we're working with, we're asking for two things that are juxtaposed, and we're going to have to work that out, as we know. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fitzgerald. I'll note that this resolution does not include an amount which needs to be increased, doesn't say increase to 25 or 33 or 50. It says that, which is why the resolution, and I know the advocates wanted a percentage that was a lot higher. This is not this council body, it was the last council that really reviewed the IDP, working alongside the mayor, increased it to 20%, 17% really, and 3% with the vouchers. This calls us to do what is our work anyways, which is to review the IDP policy, especially now that it is part of zoning. And it sets a timeline for us to do that, and it says in 2026, to do so under, after a review of the data, to see what is feasible, right? Maybe what's feasible is going to be staying at 20%, right? Or what's feasible will be because the economy has changed. This is not, this is, you know, we're in 2024, and this is not asking for review until 2026. Who knows what happens with the economy next year? Who knows what happens with the economy? You know, maybe this happens at the end of 2026, you know, early 2026. So it allows that room for us to understand that right now, the economic climate is such that where we landed was 20% IDP, where we can hopefully still get that development and that affordable housing, where we're able to catch both for both the growth of the city and affordable housing, which is why it's not until 2026.
Great. Thank you, Counsel President. I look forward to the review.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Fitzgerald. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President. And I just wanted to say Counselor Fitzgerald's points were well-taken, given that our current IDP standards that we voted in since the time I've been on the council have not yet been realized. But, you know, we work on every single project to make sure that we're getting folks to, you know, there's different levels for every different project. So, but given that our current IDP levels that we voted on are not yet in place, I look forward to continuing the conversation, but also in a way that allows for discussion and also allows for, that was the reason why it was, we voted on and it wasn't immediately put in place, was because there are barriers right now with interest rates to folks even being able to afford the 17.3, which is what we voted on. So thank you, Counsel Fitzgerald, for your points there.
Thank you. And I'd also just like to state that there are areas like in Jamaica Plain where certain projects that they've had the IDP for that building or for several buildings that developer are up at 25%. So understanding what is feasible, I think it will change. There are folks who wanted the year, I know, to be 2025, and we need to have at least enough data collection on what's happening and see what the market trends are before we can actually do a robust review. Maybe that will, you know, pursuant to this, 2026, but maybe we are in 2026, and we still don't have the data we need to be able to say how we reform it. But I do think that it's fair for advocates, and when we are in an economy and in a state where we're not producing enough affordable housing for folks to ask that, we continue to review IDP alongside everything else we're trying to do to make sure we have enough of an inventory of affordable housing.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Coletta, Durkin, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. This docket will be, this docket we refer to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0489.
Docket number 0489, Councilors Murphy and Flynn offer the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F relative to Sunday's for-all hearing order.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Murphy is not with us, but Counselor Flynn is here as a second on this docket. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Information for BPS Sunday program, so we are prepared for our City Council hearing, which is scheduled for March 18. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number? Okay, all those in favor of docket number?
All those in favor of docket number 04, okay. Councillor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0489. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you, docket number 0489 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0490? This docket has been withdrawn. We are now on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
First personnel order, docket number 0491, Councillor Luizhen for Councillor Mejia.
The Chair moves to passage of docket number 0491. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you, the personnel order has passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? No? Awesome. We are now moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are three late file matters, all personnel orders. We will take a vote to add these matters to the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matters say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you, the late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter into the record.
First late file matter, personnel order, Councillor Luizhen for Councillor Mejia.
All those, the Chair moves to passage of the late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you, this personnel order has been adopted.
Second late filed matter, personnel order, Councillor Luizhen for Councillor Braden.
The Chair moves to passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you, this personnel order has been adopted.
Third late filed matter, personnel order, Councillor Luizhen for Councillor Braden.
The Chair moves to passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. This personnel order has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, can we please go back to motions, orders, and resolutions and hear docket number 0490?
Docket number 0490, Councillor Coletta offer the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F relative to the operations of and assets held by the BRA, DBA, BPDA slash EDIC.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Coletta. Councillor Coletta, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I apologize for that. I thought I had additional time just to use the laptop.
We're trying to move this train along.
So I'm sorry. So this 17F seeks quantitative data points brought forth by my colleagues and I during our hearing last week. Seeing that this is an incredibly consequential docket, I felt it important to have a more formalized request to be submitted as a docket. This is supposed to be supplementary to the request for information, seeking more qualitative data responses, which was sent from the Committee via email to the BPDA and should be within everyone's inbox from Megan. The administration in the BPDA informed me today that they are actively working on the questions, and their goal is to get them in front of us before the working session on Friday. My goal is to have both inform our conversation on Friday at the working session and future conversations related to this docket filed by the mayor proposing the creation of the Planning Department here in the City of Boston. The working session was changed from a virtual format to in-person, and I want to thank my council colleague, Fernandez Anderson, for making that request and really appreciate her leadership throughout all of this, just to make sure that the community's voice will be heard. They will be going first to give public testimony, seeing that we kind of had to rush everybody last time during the hearing. And I do hope that we will utilize these data responses to further financial transparency, council oversight, and community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter generally? Okay. Would anyone else like to add their name? No, legally not. Okay, thanks. Councillor Coletta seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0490. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you, docket number 0490 has been passed. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Thank you, the consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Oh, sorry, Councillor Santana. Councillor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I just make sure that my name is added to docket number 0471 and then also let the record show that I could vote yes on docket number 0483? Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you.
What's the other one?
0483.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Santana. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. Do any of my colleagues have any announcements that they would like to share? Councillor Weber, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of announcements. The, at the Reggie Lewis Center Indoor Track, there, starting on Thursday, is the National High School Indoor Track and Field Championships from Thursday to Sunday. I'd just like to recognize there's a few BPS athletes. I apologize to also Boston residents and charter or private schools. I just wasn't able to figure out exactly where people went to school based on the entry list, but we have an athlete from the O'Brien, and I apologize to her for butchering her first name, but Ervika Paul is in the weight throw. She recently was crowned Massachusetts State Champion in the weight throw, so best of luck to her in the Nationals, an O'Brien student. There's a couple athletes from BLS, Colin Fisher's running the two-mile. BLS also has a distance medley relay with Brendan Nolan, Sam Burnett, Bilal Alhaji, and Liam Fitzgibbon, who is a Jamaica Plain resident, I believe, and a sprint medley relay with Hayden Cooper, Max Dean, Ethan Anderson, and Colin Fisher. So in addition to those athletes, we have some other athletes competing, and there's like youth competitions. Lily Romer, who's a BLA student, is running the 60 meters for freshmen. From the O'Brien, Sarah Blanco is running the freshman 800 and the mile, tough double. And Timothy Pritchard is running the middle school 400 meters. From the Boston Latin School, Iana Blendman is running the freshman 60-meter dash. And from Brighton, Delmas Mayo is competing in the wheelchair division. The Brandeis Track Coach when I was there was a northeastern track legend and an Olympian represented the U.S. in 10,000 meters. His name was Bruce Bickford, he's still alive, his name is still Bruce Bickford. He used to tell me before races, go out and walk their dogs. I don't know what that meant then, and I still don't know what it means, but if it was good enough for an Olympian, I wish all our Boston athletes good luck and walk their dogs in the national championship this weekend. My other announcement is just, today's an auspicious day for Ghana. It's also an auspicious day for me. 23 years ago, a nice young woman followed me off the subway in Brooklyn, and that we consider today our anniversary, 23 years and two kids and two dogs. Later, we rode the orange line in today, you know, from Jamaica Plain, just reflected on the long journey we've had together. So happy anniversary, Zan, and hopefully 23 more. Thank you.
Congratulations to our BPS students and congratulations to you and Zan on 23 years. Councillor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to highlight the volunteer work of neighbors in my community with the South Boston Citizens Association. They have been organizing many youth activities over the last week, including a swimming competition last night at the Boys and Girls Club of South Boston. And I referenced that event, it was an exceptional event, but it was kids from all over South Boston, many kids from the public housing development. And they were excellent swimmers, and a lot of the kids came up to me and said, they knew me from the neighborhood, and they said, thank you for, to your City Council colleagues and the mayor for working to get swimming lessons, swimming lessons for all kids throughout the city. And it was, it made me feel good. And then one of the other younger people said, well, when's the next swimming lesson going to be? And I was able to get that information to them, that young people want to learn how to swim, they want to be engaged, it's great exercise. We're not providing as many lessons as we could, but there's always room to advance. But providing swimming lessons, especially to kids of color, but also youth in public housing developments as well, is critical. Exposing them to water safety, swimming lessons, accessibility at the ocean, and ensuring that all kids have the same and equal opportunity for physical fitness, but also swimming lessons. So I want to say thank you to Tom McGrath and the South Boston Citizens Association for that wonderful event. And previous to that, on Monday night, we had a youth free throw contest at the Tynan Community School, and it was great to see so many young families playing basketball, shooting free throws. It was a lot of fun. And I was able to be a co-chair of that event with my father, and he's 84 now, but he loved being with the young kids of our community, trying to teach them a little bit about, a little bit about basketball. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Coletta. Councillor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I arise to mourn the loss of and honor the life of Andrew Patrick O'Connor. We're going to adjourn today's meeting in his name. He was a lifelong member of the Brighton community, but was a recent resident of East Boston. He passed away unexpectedly last week on February 27th. Andrew was an active member of the Boston Police Force. He found his calling as a proud member of the BPD, joining the force in 2021. He honorably served the residents of East Boston with distinction, where he was loved by members of the community. Andrew will be remembered by his coworkers as a great police officer and as an even better person. Andrew was a proud Brighton boy, whose handsome smile, quick wit, and personality lit up the room. He was an incredible athlete and always on the move. He loved nature and the outdoors, especially when visiting his family in Ireland. He loved to cook for his family during the holidays, having attended the Cambridge School of Culinary Arts. Throughout his tenure, Officer O'Connor received praise for his unwavering dedication to duty from both the community and his colleagues. And so I ask, as you all go about your day, please keep Officer O'Connor, his family, and his colleagues in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Coletta. Councillor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to stand to honor the memory of Andrew Patrick O'Connor. As Councillor Coletta has already mentioned, he was a lifelong member of the Brighton community and a proud member of the Boston Police Department. And we would just want to extend our sincere condolences to his family, his friends, and his colleagues at the Police Department, and thanks for his service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Braden. Before we move on to memorials, just want to make sure we shout out our upcoming birthdays. A few in Councillor Coletta's office, Sebastian Para and Gabriela Ramirez. In Councillor Durkin's office, Kennedy Avery. And in Councillor Fitzgerald's office, Julie Ryan. So happy early birthday, happy birthday to everyone. Councillor Coletta had a lunch and learn that was scheduled for after this, but we encourage that that will be rescheduled. Not sure if we have a new date, but we will reschedule that lunch and learn. Thank you to mothers out front for being here. They were going to be presenting on classroom air pollution, and it was going to be catered by Via Mexico Cafe, so we will just, oh, there may be burritos around, so there are burritos around. So no lunch and learn, but still lunch. And I want to thank Councillor Aral. We have the Monster Eye again, flag raising is this Friday at 1:00 p.m. Next Wednesday, I believe, is the flag raising for Ireland in honor of St. Patrick's Day. So, and Councillor Aral will send out information about the Women's Heritage Month event. We are now moving on to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Councillor Coletta, Walda Moschella, Phyllis Pezy. For Councillor Fitzgerald, Edward Eddie White. For Councillor Luizhen, Aldes Homisil, brother of Pastor Homisil. Haidia Broadbent, HIV/AIDS activist. Dawn McKilakuti. Lucy Crawford. Evelyn Miles, the mother of Thaddeus Miles. Marie Pandavis, mother of Harun Rashid, that Councillor Mejia elevated. For Councillors Coletta, oh, for Councillor Pepe, Richard Patrick Lawler and Steve Rando. For Councillors Coletta, Durkin, Luizhen, and the entire City Council, Boston Police Officer Andrew O'Connor. For Councillor Durkin and Councillor Luizhen, Arthur D'Angelo. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the Council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The Council is scheduled to meet again in the IONELA Chamber on Wednesday, March 13th, 2024, at noon. Thank you to my colleagues, to our staff, to central staff, to the clerk and the clerk's office, and the council synographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The Council is adjourned. Thank you.